Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are first of all utilizing Zoom for this meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen. And if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, area code 929-205-6099, and using the meeting ID 831-7953-2911. Or by clicking on the link to this meeting from the, from, from your web browser. And that address can be found on the agenda for the planning board for this evening. And that agenda has been posted in all the legal spots, including the website of the town on the planning board's page. We are also stating that we've previously given notice to the public of necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the planning board. And it's the, so it's the town's website, which is www.kingstonnh.org. And going to the planning board page from there. We also need to state that if anybody has a problem, they should call the planning board's telephone line, which will be, which we, which will be monitored during the meeting. And that's area code 603-642-3342, extension six. Or by emailing the planning board at PB, as, as in planning board, at kingstonnh.org. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So we'll start by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. All right. So I guess since Ellen is not back with us yet, I will just, I'll call the roll and I'll start it off. Glenn Koppelman and I'm in my home office alone. Richard?
Home alone.
Chris Bashaw?
Home currently alone.
Peter Coffin?
Home alone.
Peter Bakie?
Currently home in my kitchen. Tammy is here. Remington Peter is here. And we have a special guest in the house tonight, Eleanor Childs. So behave.
Excellent. All right. Okay. And so that's, that's all of our board members. And as I said, there, there are six of us on the call right now. Hopefully Ellen will be able to join us at some point. And as I said earlier, she will be, she will be the designated seventh voting member replacing Robin DuGuey, who will, will not be joining us tonight. All right, let's, let's start with some, we have, we have not quite 10 minutes before the first hearing. Let me do a couple of quick things. We, I believe that you all received by email, a letter that came from the Board of Selectmen to all volunteer members of the various Kingston boards and committees. And planning board being one of those. I won't take the time to read this out loud unless somebody thinks that I should. You all received it. This is in recognition of, of your service to the town. And I believe that it was done so because this is volunteer week. Is that right, Ellie?
Yes, it is.
That's right.
Okay. So it was a very nice letter and we thank the select board for that. Does anyone, does anyone want it read? No, okay. Did everyone receive it? Yes, okay. All right. Glenn, maybe you can help me with this next item in my list. And it's for a release of, of funds. I believe they were escrow funds for a project. And all I have is the map and lot number and the name of the, the name of the individual. It doesn't, doesn't give me any payment amounts at all, but it's R3-7-1 and 2. And it's Lori Thomas. Do you know anything about this? Glenn, you, you have to unmute yourself, please.
Yeah. That name doesn't ring a bell at all.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll wait for, we'll wait for Ellen to rejoin us because she's the one who sent this to me. All right. This next one, she also sent to me, so I'm going to wait until she's back for that one. Glenn, do you have time within the next five minutes to discuss with us the item regarding an enforce, a potential enforcement issue on Frontage Road? It says here that you're going to talk to us.
There is a, yeah, there's, so this is Frontage Road. This is property out in front of the, the fairgrounds. And it has seen some considerable action in the last, I don't know how long, maybe the last couple of months. There's been a lot of land alteration, a lot of trees brushed, dug up, shoved around. It appears the business activity on site has expanded it. When I drove by, there were probably eight or 10 vehicles that looked like they were being worked on. So it seemed to be maybe an automotive service repair facility, maybe a junkyard, although I didn't see enough vehicles that looked to me to be unroadworthy, being stored there. So it seemed like the vehicles were being worked on, not necessarily being parted out or, or just left for junk. So that's, that's to be determined, I guess.
All right. I think Richard has something to say on this.
First of all, Glenn, Ellen says she's there, but needs to be unmuted. She's on the phone.
Okay, I see a phone.
Probably her. She said that she.
I've done a request for her to unmute.
Chief Briggs and I went to this site today. I told them the numerous violations they were violating. And they said they wanted to be a good citizen of Kingston and they're going to start cleaning up immediately. They told me they're not working on cars on the site. And then I said, well, why are there so many cars? They said, oh, we're just fixing them up to sell. So in a few seconds, they contradicted themselves, but they basically want to clean up the site. They have three or four other things. So we did make contact with them today and we're going to follow up with a certified letter to them.
Okay. So suffice it to say that the Board of Selectmen are following up on this?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm just curious, I, I didn't have a chance to get down and view the site before the meeting, but is it, is it an activity that has been previously approved or come for approval to this board?
No, two years ago.
No.
There were four or five cars down there. And they were talked to about that. And then it's just escalated in the last year, probably.
Okay.
And then obviously with fall and no leaf coverage, it was very visible and we got numerous calls on it because it's not a very good welcome, you know, aspect to the town because it's one of the first things you see.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you, Richard. Is there anything you need from us before you follow up on it?
I don't think so. I think that we had enough visual and making contact with them. I think we're okay. We're going to follow it up with the letter.
Okay. All right. Well, once, once you, you can update us at a future meeting and if you need our involvement at all, just let us know.
Okay.
Okay. Could you unmute yourself, please? And just let us, let us know that you're present and whether you're alone or not.
I am present and I'm alone.
Okay, thank you. Glenn, were you able, you, you weren't able to unmute Ellen, I see.
I, I, I don't have, all I can do is ask her to unmute. I've done that twice now.
Oh. Know how? If you, if you press star six, it should unmute her on the phone.
I thought it was star nine. Well, okay, whatever.
Try either one. Maybe star six is mute.
Oh, hey. Ellen, which one was it?
It was star six and it only took me six times before it worked.
Oh.
Star thirty-six, I guess.
The thing with the car place that Richard was just talking about, there's also appears to be construction debris that's been dumped there.
It has several things.
And Richard, you're clear because at the inspector's meeting, Phil asked me to ask the planning board to do an enforcement action. But has that, has that request now been canceled?
I think that's been canceled because they admitted to the issues. They said that they would start working on clearing them up and we're going to follow it with a letter, give them so much time and then do enforcement action at that point.
Because it also too, I don't know if you saw this from where you were, but it also looked like they cleared some of the trees and the state properties so they could make room for visual for selling of vehicles.
Like I say, there were four or five issues down there. There's travel trailers occupied, there's.
Oh, good.
No, building material, there's several things.
Okay.
All right. So we'll, we'll undoubtedly hear more about that one. Okay, it is 6:44 going on 6:45, so we won't get started on another topic right now, but we still have a number of correspondence items to do and we'll do those after, after our hearings. All right. So the first hearing is for Robert Kalil, MPBK Trust, 19 Page Road in Kingston. It's tax map R22 lot 32. And the legal notice reads that the planning board will review the proposed conversion of the existing property from a two-family dwelling into a three-unit dwelling. And a variance to Article 104, Section 4 was granted by the zoning board of adjustment on February 13th of 2020. All right. Who it, who is speaking tonight for the applicant? The applicant is speaking for himself, yes?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So we have Mr. Kalil and also?
My daughter, Mackenzie Kalil.
Hi.
Okay. Well, welcome. Thank you for joining.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Alexa.
I have to say, wait, wait, wait. Am I unmuted?
You are.
I came specifically, Mr. Kalil, to tell you what a fabulous job you've done on the exterior of the property.
Thank you. And I continue to make it nicer and nicer. I'm not going to stop. It's going to be beautiful.
Thank you, Glenn, for indulging me.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to mute myself now so I can be.
And, and I, I'm, can I, can I ask you, since you're here, that, that, that you're, you're affirming that in fact the variance was granted?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Don't make me have to get Trisha here again.
I'm not afraid of her. You two know that.
I told Mackenzie, I go, she's shocked, just like Trisha. I like Alexa. She's a good girl.
Okay. So here's how, here's how we do our hearings. I, I know most of you are familiar with this, but just in case there, there's anyone out there in TV land watching, we give the applicant the opportunity to make a presentation and explain to the board what the proposal is. And then we will get into questions amongst the board members. We will ask our town planner and our town engineer to go through their comments with us. And both of them have reviewed the plans and have provided comment sheets to the board. And, and once the board has had most of its discussion, we will open it up for public comment and we'll do that using the chat function in, in Zoom. So I will explain that when we get to that point. But if you do, if you're a member of the public and you have questions, just hold them until the public comment period begins. All right. So before, before I ask for Glenn and Dennis to go through their comments, Mr. Kalil or Ms. Kalil, if you have any, any comments that you'd like to make to us about what the proposal is, now would be your opportunity.
I'm just proposing some proper parking spots and just pretty much using the property the way it's been used. But, uh, you know, just a more formal approach to it and just looking for an approval so I can finish up that third apartment and finish the property, the, the parking and wherever I may want to put the mail, whatever. Just, I just want to finish up. I've been, it's been a three-year progress, process to do this. So I just want to get an approval to finish up and make the property look beautiful, more beautiful than it is looking now.
Okay. The, the, the building itself is not being expanded? The, the, the conversion is taking place within the existing walls?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. All the same.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I'm going to turn it over to, to Glenn and Dennis and they'll go through their comments for the board's benefit and for your benefit as well. And which one of you would like to start? We have, we have the written comment sheets from both of you, so.
I can go first, I guess.
Sure, Dennis. This is the shortest comment sheet I've seen from you in a long time.
Well, I mean, it's, 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 it's like Mr. Kalil says, he's done a lot of work and it's fixed up. It's very nice and landscaping is done very nice and looks very neat. And so I, I think that I commend him on that. It's, it's really a neat, neat piece of property. So I did review the site in the site plan for the reference lot. And my comments are based on the two-sheet plan that I, I did get. And I offer the following comments. On number sheet, number one, if this sheet is for recording purposes, there are multiple areas where there is writing over text and, and the registry doesn't allow that. So that would have to be corrected. Number two, Article 901.1C3, the driveway, driveways shall be located 20 feet from the property line. As this is a gravel driveway, it can be moved. And on the, on the west-ly side property line, the driveway is very close to the property line. So, and it should be 20 feet from the property line. So that could be corrected. Number three.
Yeah.
All right. Who, who's got an open mic with background? Mr. Lee, is that you?
I think it might be Mr. Lee.
George Lee?
I'm here.
If, if there's background noise coming up and if you're not speaking at the moment, could you please mute your, your microphone?
You want to say mute?
So I can.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
My comment number three, Article 9045G28, as for the septic area, is shown. I would recommend that the state approval number for operations should be added to the plan with a number of bedrooms and the approval, approved wastewater flow amount for this, for this building as it's required for a three-unit. It doesn't say how many bedrooms and how, how big the septic system is. So that probably should be noted on the plan somehow. Number four, I did visit the site and took some photos. I did attach those photos to my report. Most of the stormwater surface runoff flows, flows westerly toward Mill Road and then over a wooded area and grass for treatment before reaching the wetland. Some minor erosion has incurred on recently on, in the, in the graded area because some of this area was regraded fairly recently. And so there's a little bit of a erosion on, on the east side of the lot. This can easily be corrected and some stabilization with brass growing this summer. No, no stormwater management changes are recommended at this time. And that's what I had for a review. So that completes my review at this time.
Thank you, Dennis.
And so if you did want to see the photos, they're, they're in my, my report and you could put those on the screen if you didn't want to show them.
We, we did get them in our packets. I don't have it right at hand to put them on the screen, but if, if anyone feels they need to see them, we can, we can do that. Let's, let's hold that for the time being then, because I think all the board members had a chance to, to see them. All right. Glenn, would you like to run through your comments for us?
Sure. So I just gave a brief history of the fact that there was a variance provided by the ZBA on this site to Mr. Kalil. And I wanted to remind the board that this is our first public hearing, so we should consider invoking jurisdiction on the plan to start the statutory time clock. And I wanted to comment that I found the plan complete for that jurisdictional invocation if that board chose to do. I had four comments, two of which are really just in, in information. The plan shows a number of exterior lights, I think six of them around the building. And I'm, I'm presuming that perhaps they are not dark side, dark sky compliant because they're probably the fixtures that have been on the building for a long time. And I would just counsel that maybe in the future, if those fixtures get changed, that Mr. Kalil would see fit to do them with dark sky compliant fixtures that meet the town's ordinance. That's a presumption on my part. That may already be the case. Typically with existing structures, it is. The second of my comments is that the, this site has two driveways. And Dennis mentions the fact that one of them is really close to the property line. That's also the one that's very close to the intersection of, that this property sits on. So my comment is, are both driveways necessary? And would the owner consider eliminating that most westerly one completely? That's, that's just something I, I say because that is the one that is actually very close to the, the intersection that exists now. My third comment was, has the septic system been enlarged to allow the additional apartment? And in discussions with, with Richard Wilson, who has done some research on the site, it is, there is an approved system there for six bedrooms. And maybe even that approved plan has subsequently been constructed. So I think that addresses, my comment doesn't fully address Dennis's that, that information, that permitted information, could it most definitely be added to the plan? Would provide good information moving forward. And then my final point is just that because this is a multifamily structure, our zoning ordinance requires four parking spaces per unit. And I know that some people may find that excessive when they look at this plan, but it is actually what our ordinance requires of these units. So what they've done is actually completely comply with what our, our zoning ordinance requires. So I wanted to bring that out in case somebody felt like it was overkill on parking spaces on the site. So that being said, those constitute the comments that I had on this proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Ellen, were you trying to say something?
No.
Okay. And I, since I can't see you, if you do have something to say, just, just sort of break in and let us know.
Thank you.
And by the way, while you were not, not with us there before, you, you were appointed to be the designated member in Robin's place tonight?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
What the hell is that?
I think, since the driveway issue was mentioned in both Glenn's and Dennis's, I think we ought to have a discussion about that. But let me go through the rest of the department comments first and then, and there might be a few other things in here and then the board can get into a, get into some discussion about that.
I assume she's talking about the big boom that just went off.
Yes, I am.
Yeah. We, I got it just after you said that.
I got it in three seconds.
And we heard that here. We're on now 125 and on the Plastall line. At the Dallas ship, we heard it.
I heard nothing.
Nothing up this way. This is too far north, I guess, where we are.
It shook me.
This is my house and where I'm sitting.
Are they blasting down there, Ellen? Okay.
Yeah. It was a big boom and it, it hit Ellen before it hit us, so.
Okay. Well, hopefully it's nothing serious. Hopefully nothing serious. And hopefully no more of them. Okay. Let me go through the comment sheets here. The first one is, is the one you were referring to, Glenn, which was the, the one from health officer. And the health officer now is Mr. Wilson. So it's his name on this. And this is a revised comment sheet indicating that he, he, I believe you said, Richard, that you did find documentation that indicated that, that the septic system was in fact designed and built?
Designed and built for six bedrooms.
For six bedrooms. Okay. Perfect.
And if they need that sheet, it's in the property folder to put the information on the file.
Okay.
Or on the print. I'm sorry.
Next, next one is, looks like it's from the building inspector. And there are a couple of different sheets here attached for this. Okay. These comments are dated April 19th of this year. It's regarding this property. First comment is that the building inspector has no issue with a two-family conversion to a three-family. Okay. Second comment, what is the status of the fourth unit? See attachments? And then there, he attaches some other documentation referencing a fourth unit. But, but we're only being asked to go from a two to a, two to a three unit, right?
If, if I can, Robert explained to me that at one point in the past, when they had done a walkthrough of the property, there had been a fourth bedroom slash unit. And he knows it's only for three. He's just wondering, what is the property owner doing about that upstairs bedroom? Has that gone away? Is it now storage? Is it part of the third apartment? He's just wondering what the status of that was.
Okay. Mr. Kalil, while we're on this subject, can you, can you answer that for us?
The fourth unit was a tiny little undersized unit, probably 450, 500 square feet. It wasn't even really anything. It was embarrassing. When we did a walkthrough, it was, we almost started crying at the conditions and the size of the family, that John Crosby had the family in there. So all that really was, was a, was the existing house. And he, he just locked off one wall and made like a living room into an apartment. So I just, so we're just using that fourth apartment, which is really nothing, as the first, as the, one of the, we just increased the size of one of the apartments, which was originally like that anyway. Originally part of the house.
Okay. So, so there are in fact three dwelling units and that space that's, that's in question has been added to one of those three units.
Exactly. Where it originally was.
Oh, okay. All right. Does any, does any, do any board members have any questions about that item?
Let me speak. There's no kitchen in there. There's nothing in there, just a bedroom and a small little living room.
Under, understood. Elliot?
Yeah. Let me, let me clarify a little more. Mr. Kalil bought the property from Mr. Crosby, who had it as a single family and added three apartments. And it was pretty disgraceful, the condition they're in. And that fourth apartment was the size of a closet. It might've been 300. I don't think it was, I think you're being generous, Mr. Kalil, when you say 500 square feet.
Probably smaller.
If not, yes, I think it was smaller. The ZBA had no problem with three housing units in that property. So it, it was in a two-family. It could've had two anyways and the variance was for a third. So there was no fourth. The fourth one was wiped out.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Ellie.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, the third comment from the building inspector is, and it, it, it looks like it's a question, but it doesn't have a question mark. It says, add to Kalil's boat storage? I don't know what that means.
I, I have a, either two or three personal, my. I, I have a, either two or three personal, my personal boats are packed in the back out of the way. They're not bothering anybody.
Okay.
They're in, they're in shrink wrap, they're expensive boats, they're lined up nice and straight and even and I just, I leave them there during the winter. It's a nice safe location and during the, during the summer months, I take them out of there.
Okay.
But they're just for winter storage there. I mean, it's a big backyard.
Understood.
I don't think there's any harm to doing that.
And if I can, Robert's question was, just, he didn't see it noted on the plan. And he had driven by the site and had seen them, that there was storage on the property. And he just didn't know if they also showed the setback from the property line. He, he wasn't opposed to it.
Oh, oh.
And then questioned if, if they met the setbacks and things and just didn't know if it needed to be shown on the plan.
Oh, so that's the nature of the question. Okay, I didn't, I didn't understand it Ellen?
I understand, that's why I spoke with him to find out what he meant.
Okay. All right, well, the board might want to think about that when it comes time to doing a discussion on, 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 perhaps a conditional approval on this at some point. That might be, that might be an item to, to talk about, okay. Oh, and I should have done let, I, I'm gonna pause, we have a number of comments from departments yet to go, but let me pause and, and do the, do the vote on, on jurisdiction and make us, make us legal on that. If I, if I could have a motion, please to invoke jurisdiction.
I'll move that we accept jurisdiction on this plan.
All right, motion by Peter Coffin.
Second.
Second by Chris, Chris Bashaw. Thank you. Discussion. All right, Ellen, just for convenience sake, I'm gonna call the roll, Mike, if that'd be easier for you, or do you want to do it?
Oh no, feel, feel free, that way everybody can see.
Okay. All right, um, Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes, sorry, modern technology.
Thank you. Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Ellen Faulkner?
Yes.
And Glenn Koppelman is yes. So that's unanimous, that motion carries. And, and again, the, the invoking of jurisdiction means that the board considers the plan complete enough to discuss it and to take further action on it. Okay, next, next department comment is Conservation Commission. And their comments read this way. It says, the plan shows a total of 12 parking spaces for three apartments. This seems excessive. Are there plans to pave the parking area? And if so, what would the total impervious be? All right, so we've, we've, we've already had the discussion about the number of parking spaces and the fact that that in fact complies with the, with the regulations. Are, Mr. Khalil, are this, are the parking spaces currently paved?
No.
Are there plans to pave them?
I didn't plan on it. That would be a huge job.
No, I'm, I'm not.
That's a hu, that's a massive lot and to pave those, I was just gonna crush stone and make them pretty with a border and that's it. I wasn't gonna get into paving. That's just, that's just too much over there.
Well, I, I wasn't suggesting that you do, I, I, I was just asking if that, if it were in your plans.
No, I may, I may pave maybe just a, a little bit in the front. I may pave a small amount, maybe 25% of the driveway possibly, but it's just a such a large expense, I may not even do that.
Okay. Uh, let's see, the next comment on, on, from Conservation is that the plans state that there are no wetlands on the property, yet according to the key, there is a small designated wetland in the upper left. Is that Glenn or Dennis, is that the case?
Yes, I, I was out there and I took a look at it. I was a little bit concerned that it might be a vernal pool and it, it may have some characteristics of a vernal pool. But you know, it's been so dry that it's very small area of wetland and so I didn't really think it was a functional vernal pool. In, and it was only a small area that is shown on the plan that looks like it's off the property. It may run through that, when it is a heavy rain, it might run through that little pointed area at the north side. But it, it wasn't when I looked at it. So, so I, I, I don't think it's a, like a, a big wetland resource area, so I, I'm, I'm glad that he did put it on the plan. But it really is not a, a wetland resource that's on the site that I could see.
Okay, all right, thank you. Glenn, did you have any comment on that?
No, I, I went by the, because I did not do a site walk. So I went by the fact that the plan preparer indicated by note that there were no well and resources on the site.
Okay. All right. The last comment on Conservation says, we are not sure about the significance of the broken line shown in bold. The pattern is not listed on the key. Dennis or Glenn, any, any enlightenment on that?
I can, I can look at the plan.
Okay.
It appears to be on the second page of the plan.
The heavy broken path.
That's a contour line, that would be contour 180. If you look right directly under the abutting, where it says map R22 lot 33. The abutting lot to the east. There's a 180 right underneath that and that is one of the contour lines, which is a bold contour line and at the 10-foot contour. The rest of the contour lines are in a lighter dash area. So I believe that that bold line that they're talking about is just a contour line of elevation 180.
Yeah, there's another one right around the wetlands you were talking about that's contour 170. So it looks like the, the 10-foot intervals are bold.
Exactly.
Right, thank, thanks guys. All right, that was, that was it for Conservation. The next comment sheet is from the Highway Department. And there are three on here. The comment sheet is dated April 19th of this year. And the first one is, the westerly driveway, not per driveway regulations, too close to the lot line. Must be 20 feet from the lot line, so we're, we're back to that again and we'll, we'll have that discussion once we get through, through comments. Second one, do driveways have an approved state of New Hampshire curb cut? Because these are on, these are our 111. Maybe Mr. Khalil can answer that. I didn't see any notation of DOT permits, but Mr. Khalil, do you know if, if you have state approval for those driveway curb cuts?
I have no idea, sir.
So that, that would have happened, that would have happened before you owned the property?
Oh yeah, I, I've owned it probably three and a half, four years. I, um, the drivers are so old, I mean, they've gotta been, been there 30 years, I mean, for a long time, it's just solid, solid gravel. In great shape. It's gonna be a sin if I have to move that, that, the, the driveway closer to the intersection over. It's gonna ruin the landscaping and everything over there. I'm, I'm wondering if there's any way I could waive that.
Okay, like, I, I wanna hold that, I don't want to get into that discussion just yet. I'd like to get through all these comments and then we'll get to that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
The third item from Highway Department is telephone pole is in the middle of the westerly driveway, not allowed by power company. Applicant must get the approval of the power company and the phone company. Hmm.
The comment on that, I'm pretty sure that the electric company has a right of way through my property to service their poles. That's what I've been told by a few different people. And it looks to me like that would be the case, that, that the the driver that we're talking about. That's the right of way that brings you to the poles that the electric company uses to get access to two poles in the back. I think at one time, they were paying some of the taxes or they pay some of the taxes for that piece of property to be able to have access right away there. That's what I've been told, I, I don't see documented, but a few different people told me that.
You, you don't have recollection of whether or not it's in your deed?
I never called the electric company, I'm just using the lot as it's been used for years. And I don't open up a can of worms and I was always gonna keep that open for them to access their poles. That's the only way to get in there to the back poles they have. They have a couple transformers way in the back.
I wonder.
That'd be the only way to get in there would be crossing my property.
I, I wonder if, I wonder if maybe way back when that accessway was actually the, the accessway for the power utilities and it, it sort of morphed into becoming a, a driveway as well.
Yep. But it's definitely on my property and I, I don't know the legalities of the electric company with their, but I was just gonna leave, I, I don't make a big mess. I don't stir up a big horn, it's sense, I just leave everything the way it is, just make it nicer, that's all I do. It's been like that 25 years, probably longer.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if the driveways and the driveway entrance predates Route 111. Because Route 111 used to go on Danville Road instead of its current route and I would assume that those driveways were there a lot before Route 111 was there.
The quality of that driveway, if whoever built it did an amazing job. It was probably the power company, but I mean, it, it doesn't have any dips, it's solid gravel and it's, it's made to last. It's a beautiful driveway, it really is, for not being top, I'm impressed whoever built that. So I'm assuming the electric company probably built that 20 years ago or whatever.
All, all the more reason why that's probably what its function was originally and then it became a double use and over time. Okay, well, I, I'm not quite sure where to go with that. You know, if if, if they're in fact, if they're in fact as an easement over your property, it really should be reflected in the deed and we don't have the deed to see it, so.
I don't know if it's in the deed or not, but
Well, it should be, whether it is or not, that's another issue, but, yeah, okay. Well, if the board wants to discuss that further when we get to that point, we can. Fire Department. Also dated April 19th of this year, addressed to this board regarding this application. There are two comments. One, this property has an outstanding permit to replace two oil tanks. During inspections, several violations were noted. Notified Mr. Khalil, see attached documents and he fire inspector has attached those for our reference. And numbered, the second point is that inspection is needed upon completion of the work. Mr. Khalil, can you update us on the status of the tank replacement?
Yes, I can. When I bought the property, there was two old outside rundown oil tanks. I installed two brand new oil tanks to code and I put concrete slabs underneath them. Within the last two or three years, it's been a code, but I think it's NF P 13 Fire Department, they want a concrete slab for, so the oil tank outside won't sink into the ground. So I did that by code, I pulled the permits. I got them inspected. During the inspection, they found two little simple things wrong with it. And I said, I gotta get this whole building approved by the fire department and the plumbing inspector and everything else. I said, when I get that all done, I'll fix those two little things. It was two little minor things. But I did get the permits and I installed two very safe oil tanks, they're not gonna leak oil in the ground. That was my, my, that was my biggest concern was sort of changing those oil tanks. And I'm a master plumber and I'm licensed to do that anyway. So, so that's what I did. I just changed the oil tanks and I did get the permits to do that.
Okay, so there, 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 there's still an outstanding inspection though for those items that you discussed.
I got them inspected and the, the guy, I forget what it said, it was such a small little thing. I said, I'll just change it later when I come back here and I have to get the plumbing inspected, because I gotta get everybody back over there, right?
Okay, so just a note to the board, if, if someone is making sort of a list of potential items here.
It had nothing to do with safety or anything like that. It was just, the tank was pitched a little bit, he wanted it pitched a little more, the a little more angle on the oil tank, which is, that's no big deal to me. I mean, I can do that simple.
Well, it might not be a big deal to you, but it is a big deal to the fire department that has noted it as an outstanding item.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, if, if you I'm just instructing the board that, that, you know, when it comes time to do an approval on this, that might very well be one of the conditions that has to be met. That's all I'm saying.
That'll be fine.
Ellen?
I just wondered when that inspection was done. How long ago?
When the oil tanks?
Yeah.
Uh, I've, maybe a year ago, when I put the oil tanks in.
Are they currently being used for the property? Are people in there and you're using them?
Yes, they are.
The permit, the permit was pulled on September 27th of 2018, Ellen. For those two tanks.
I thought of the year ago, time flies, a couple of years ago. When I bought the property, I saw they were shoot, when I saw, when I bought the property and I saw they weren't safe, I immediately fixed them and made them. I brought them right up the code where they need to be.
Yeah, okay, let, let me just, let me just finish with this, this line of thinking here. So, so there was the there was the permit pulled. These are notes from the inspection, from an inspection that was done on 1214 of 2018. And it says, inspected two outside oil tanks for apartments A and B, both tanks installed by landlord. That's you, I'm assuming, Mr. Khalil. And in this, in this inspection report, it indicates that they called you about this, which you, which you said. And they listed a couple of things like a couple of, couple of outstanding items to be corrected. Okay, so that was, that was from the original inspection. Then there's a follow-up conversation on the 19th of December of 2018, indicating that they called you about the inspection, they talked with you. Mr. Khalil stated he will fix the issues, but has plans to move them again. Oh, plans to move them?
I may not even keep them at the locations where they are right now, but they're very safe and they're not gonna leak and that's the most important thing. I may, once I get this permit and everything and I move forward, I may end up putting them, ones on one side of the house, ones on the other side of the house. I may just build a nice shed and put them both inside a shed, so they're not, they're not visible from the, from the street. They're both visible from the street now, that's not really my style. So I told him I, I have to get, I have to get a, a large inspection here, at that time, they'll be perfect. I may, I may even move them, so. It was just, it was just a quick thing because I saw the, I can fix those, what they want me to fix, I can fix in 15 minutes, it's not a big deal.
Okay. The, the point is, and I go back to the same statement that it's an outstanding item identified by the fire department and it, it, it would just need to be resolved and
That's fine, no problem.
We could, we could, we could note that as a condition on any approval.
They're gonna come back out and inspect the, the, the smoke detectors in, in the, the, the third unit, the new unit. They're gonna inspect, I'm gonna do some gas pipe and I think that, and, and, and put a, a new gas burner, so the fire department's gonna come out there and at that time, the whole place will be beautiful. I've been doing that, my business is plumbing and heating for 25 years of my life and I did, I did tons of jobs and I, I know what they're looking for and I'll do a fabulous job and they'll sign off, no problem. I just, the safety wise, I was concerned when I bought the property and I made it safe within the first six months and it's beautiful now. So I'll take care of any issues like that, that's no problem at all. It's just little minute little things. I gotta get them back out there for many, for many permits.
Understood. Okay. So that, that is the extent of department comments that I have in my hand. Ellen, does that sound like we've caught them all?
Um, I think so. Just check.
My, my, my printer was going on overtime today.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
You have, else which you talked about, buildings.
Conservation and fire.
Highway.
Highway, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. All right, before I open it up for public comment, are there any immediate questions from the board? Questions or comments? And they appear to be silent, okay. Um, we have a couple of folks on the call that I I recognize names. Um are any of you going to want to speak during public comment period? Because if you are, I need to open the chat function and have you put in your name and address. Well, why don't we do that anyway, Glenn, and then we'll see what happens? Glenn?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It's been opened.
Okay, all right. So if, for those of you familiar with Zoom, uh down at the, at the bottom, there's a, there's a little control bar and one of the functions there is called chat. And if you click on that, it will give you the opportunity to type a message. And if you'd like to speak, if you please type your name in and your address. So we have it for the record. And I'll, I'll give you, give you a couple of, couple of minutes here to do that.
Glenn, this is Peter.
Yes, Peter.
While we're waiting, maybe a quick explanation of why this is here. It's because uh when it got the variance, it became, went from the uh residential to commercial. So it's a change of use because three apartments or three dwelling units or more on a property uh is commercial by our ordinances. So um we have to do a site plan for commercial property that way. So that's, that's why, uh that's why it came to us. That's why the ZB sent it to us.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's good uh good background information. I wasn't even, you know, I wasn't even thinking of it as a, as a site plan, to be honest with you, but but that's, but you're right. That's what it is. Okay, all right. I'm not seeing anything coming into, into the chat function, so uh I'm gonna close that on my screen. And I'm going to, I'm just gonna call out just in case folks are having any difficulty using the chat function. Uh Mr. Leet, did you have something on this application that you wanted to comment on?
Yeah, the saddle up silent room, we get to it.
Oh, no, that's fine. I'm just checking on this one.
No.
All right, uh there's somebody named Charlie. Oh, is that maybe that's Charlie? That's Charlie Zilch. Okay, how about Rob?
That's Charlie Zilch. I don't know who Rob is.
He's Charlie and Rob? All right, and Andy Brubaker, I know him. Andy, you have any comments? No.
No.
Thank you.
I think Rob is involved with the next meeting. I think that's Rob Waters.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, uh so at this point, uh there, there apparently is no public comment on this application, so we will close public comment. Just for reference, it's seven twenty-five PM. And bring it back to the board. So what is the, what is the board's pleasure? You've invoked jurisdiction on this. Uh we have a number of comments from our planner and from our town engineer, as well as town departments. Do, does the board have any further questions of Mr. Khalil?
I just checked Mr. Khalil's deed and traced back the deeds on that property to nineteen seventy-six. I didn't go beyond that. And none of the actual deeds themselves have uh an easement or a right of way or anything for utilities on the actual deeds. That doesn't mean a separate document might not have been recorded at some time to one of the previous owners.
Right.
But uh going to the main document, I did trace back the deeds and it doesn't appear to be a right of way there. So I can see why Mr. Cleo couldn't find one.
There, there is a, a big transformer that the power company has to get to and they, they use that, they use, they go across my property to get to that. It's the only way to get in there.
Well, I believe they have a right of way, but you had said you couldn't find one legally and it's not readily available.
I don't go look at the stuff. I'm just easygoing. I just, whatever.
Thank you, Lynn, for checking. Other questions from the board? Ellen?
We're going to have a discussion about the item brought up by the road agent and the engineer and the planner about the gravel driveway that's right near the Route 111 intersection that doesn't meet any of the setbacks per their comments, so.
Right, right. And and that, that in fact is the accessway that we're talking about that apparently the power company uses.
Right, but if it's just the power company using it and it's not meant to have any of the people who live there use that, would that, if that's what the board's um thought process is?
That doesn't make any sense at all. That doesn't make any sense at all. It's a night, it's very safe in one way and out the other and the other people go in one way and out the other. Nobody's backing out on one twenty-five. That little loop around, that little horse shoe driveway is fabulous for the safety wise.
Okay, Mr. Khalil, I'm gonna, I I have to ask you at this point, just to hold your comments for a second and let the board have the discussion and if if, if, if we need to ask you a question, we will.
Okay, sir.
But I just, I just want to make sure the board has a chance to work their way through this.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Glenn, this is Peter. Um my question is one that was asked uh by one of the department heads, which is that uh whether there's uh the state approval, because we don't have jurisdiction over one eleven. So uh as far as
for every, every property in town, whether they go onto a road, state road or not.
No, I I I understand that's the new way, but uh as far as whether the existing driveways were approved by the state, because they, for Route 111, they would have had to approve those. Um and that could be just put in as a condition of approval that uh that that uh state highway permit uh each attained. And also, as we know now, and since this is a new set of plans, uh the town would also need to get driveway permits. As far as the setback goes, uh that could be considered grandfathered, um since the driveway has been there for, for a number of years. I look back on um coastal viewer and it, it goes back before the turn of the century, so um I uh I don't know that uh moving it is required. Um especially given that there's a fairly big space between the end of the property and Mill Road. Um, so I I I would be fine with that as long as the, there's a condition that uh the the state highway department or the has and the town has issued driveway permits.
Well, there might not be, I mean, if these are existing accessways, Peter, um uh there, there might very well not be uh permits in hand. They probably go back quite a ways.
You have to predate the highway department as.
I suspect that if, if, if there were changes made to them, then new permits would be, would be needed. But I suspect that now it's probably aren't any.
Right.
And I would also suspect that when the state built Route 111 there and widened Page Road to the width that it had, it would have taken land away from this property and I'm assuming the state would have put in new, the beginning of the driveways. Because, so I'm assuming that the state did all of it and if the state did that, if the state's going to take some of their land and have to put in new driveways for them, I'm sure the state permitted it.
Or it, or it predated the permitting.
Exactly, exactly. But I'm sure the state's aware of it.
Right, so would we want to request a waiver and have the applicant request a waiver for the setback or just grandfathered?
Yeah, I think we should just grandfather it.
Yeah, I I would like to see something like this if we have the ability to just grandfather it. I mean, this always seems to be one of those cases where when the property was in absolutely abhorrent conditions and kind of got away with doing whatever it wanted with no improvements. And now we have somebody that wants to do the right thing and uh bring things into a better state and they kind of end up paying, paying the piper, so to say, and being made to jump through hoops. So any hoops we can alleviate. And I can say, you know, I I travel that intersection numerous times a day and I've never thought to myself that uh the multiple driveways was any type of an issue. And I think creating it down to a single driveway, if anyone wanted to go that route, would actually cause probably more of a traffic issue and you'd have people trying to back out instead of being able to pull out frontwards at times.
And I don't think that was ever suggested. The only
No, I know that. I'm just bringing that up in case anyone else was gonna comment down the road.
To move it, since it was gravel, it could be moved easily, but uh um I'm, I'm just basically looking at the vehicle for uh how we want to deal with this, so um.
Glenn? What, did you have your hand up, Glenn?
I just said that I actually had suggested eliminating the western driveway.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
I'm gonna agree with Chris. I think that it's an existing situation that having one driveway with twelve parking spots would create havoc in the uh parking area. It would probably force somebody into backing out at some time. You know, I think it's a safe situation now and why change it after all these years?
I make a motion that we grandfather the uh the two driveways.
Pre-existing, conforming yes.
Yes.
Hang on, Ellen?
Well, I don't have a problem with where the board is heading, but the board has the ability to have on the record that there's a waiver with the answer being that the reason why it was waived is because the board feels like it's a grandfather juice and it actually is safer. I think it's better for the applicant to actually have the board grant a waiver because you have the highway road agent asking for, saying that there are issues with their drive. We've had it. They've said it's a big issue with Glenn and Dennis, but since it's been brought up by three of the people that we asked for comments, I think it's just it's better for the applicant and for the board's process and future processes to just legitimately grant a waiver based on all the reasons the board said.
So does that require Mr. Khalil or his daughter to send a quick email to you, Ellen, while we're sitting here, uh requesting the waiver?
He can, he can do that. He can write it up now and say he's gonna hand it to me tomorrow. I don't, you know, the board can say we grant a waiver based on the assumption that we'll get one. Um COVID and nobody's in the room, which is how we used to do it.
Yeah, can we, can we just take that waiver orally because of the fact that we can't meet in person where normally we'd have to scruple something out right in the room? That the meeting minutes will be able to reflect that, if they just make the motion orally.
And that it was done that way specifically due to the fact that the board is not in the room with the man. I mean, we, you have to make adjustments to some of the adjustments we've had to make. But I just think it's a better example to actually.
We should, we should also address at the same time the uh comment about the telephone pole in the driveway. Um and uh that we aren't necessarily granting the authority for the applicant to have that driveway with a pole in it and whether that, that would, should be worked out between the phone company, who I guess owns the poles, and uh and the applicant.
Well, if it's been there forever, I don't think that the phone company or the electric company appears to be concerned with it.
Okay.
I just make a comment. According to my pictures, I don't believe the driveway and parking area go down that far yet. Um, it could be a proposed area for parking. So by creating a parking area down around that pole might, might be something that could be an obstacle in, in the way if you're creating a driveway down through there to to access the parking spaces one, two, and three that are shown on the plan. Um, it's, it's, it's open space. I'm sure people may be driving over there. I don't, I didn't see any cars there when I was there. And there isn't really a designated parking area there, but it is stable and it, it, it could be considered a parking area, but I think the pole is an obstacle. And, and perhaps going around the pole might be uh what the traffic is doing instead of going between the pole and the building. So I, I really think that the pole is kind of an obstacle there and it would be too bad to have it in the middle of a driveway, uh shown in the middle of a driveway, um where um people could back into it or hit it. That's, that would be my concern about the pole. And I have another uh concern after we get done talking about this. So I'll talk about that in a little while.
Okay, Dennis is bitter again. I just realized where you're talking about is the pole. It's just to the west of the existing dwelling, not the one that's down by the
Exactly.
Yeah, that's the one I saw in the picture. It seemed to be off to the side. So that would be the only one that would be existing and as Lynn said, that's been there all the time. But if you're talking about building a new driveway back down the uh left side of the property as you're standing on one eleven, uh then that pole that's shown on the uh the plan is right smack dab in the middle of the proposed driveway. So that proposed driveway, um that would be a problem. Um, I think the pole down by the road on the existing driveway uh is not a problem, so.
So I, I, I would, uh Mr. Khalil, I would recommend that you, you know, if you are going to have the driveway extend back to those parking spaces one, two, and three, that the driveway would go around the pole. So it wouldn't be right in the middle of the driveway you create. So I don't know, is that may, perhaps that's where the traffic is going now around the pole? Um
I had the engineer Lavelle out there and he walked the property and I said, I need some the best spot to put parking. Give me the, give me the best spot. And I, I left it up to him and I really didn't even check to see where he drew. I just wanted to get one step on this meeting. And if by any chance I had to relocate a couple parking spots to be in a better spot, I, I could do that.
Well, I, I, I agree. And I, I think that to show the driveway going around the pole on the plan be a better thing to show on the plan than showing the pole in the middle of the driveway. Even though the, the edge of the driveway might be right up against the property line. Um, I, I think that if that's the direction the board's going and allowing that driveway to be down there so that the utility company can maintain that pole if they have a, have, have the rights to do that, then perhaps uh showing the, the, the accessway in the driveway going around the pole would be better than showing it in the middle of the driveway. That's the point I was trying to make.
That makes sense. I actually never walked it to see where he mounted, put the pockets, but I left it up to him. And if he didn't do a good job, uh we can change it and make it more you, user friendly.
Other board comments? So can, can, can we try to put a bow on the issue of the um the drive, the, the, the westerly driveway um with regard to either, either accepting it as a, as a, as an existing condition or, or as Ellen is suggesting perhaps to to, to make it even a little more tidy and more accurate to to do the waiver process on it.
I, I would suggest a waiver. And let them drop it off tomorrow, vote on it tonight. Make the condition of approval, obviously, that we get the waiver if we get to that point. I don't like the words grandfather because you get into debate about safety and things like that because you cannot grandfather a safety issue.
Right.
So if you do a waiver, you're okay. If you want that as a motion, I just made it.
Second.
All right, motion by Richard Wilson, second by Lynn Merrill to grant a waiver. And I don't have the regulation number in front of me, but it's for the driveway, uh driveway location uh and the offset from the property line, that it doesn't meet the required twenty feet.
It's nine oh one point one C three, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And the reasoning being that it's an existing condition and um and for all of the reasons the board had in its discussion regarding that it's probably a safer situation than to than to try to combine it with the other driveway. And also that uh the board would be expecting the waiver to be supplied either by email or in writing to the planning board? As a condition? Okay. Ellen, is that, is that a messy enough motion? Oh, Ellen, where are you?
Actually.
Uh-oh.
We need her because it, the easiest way might be for Ellen to produce the wording, email it to Mr. Khalil, who can then send it as a request. That way we know that what we are voting on is what will be get requested. Um, however. He.
I think he's got enough language to put a waiver together based on what we've just said.
Okay, I can put a waiver request together and send it to Mr. Khalil.
That, that's probably best.
Ellen says she's there, but just off the phone for a minute. Says, give her a minute.
Okay.
Well, Glenn, if you could, if you could do that or coordinate with Ellen?
Yes.
So, Mr. Khalil, you can be expecting some, uh, some, some wording that so that you can draft up the waiver for us, the waiver request.
Thank you.
Uh, as part of the motion, does the board also want that waiver uh to go on to the, uh, onto the plan?
I think as long as we're changing the plan anyway, I, I making notations that um I, I think it should be a note on there that a waiver was granted.
Well, nor, normally, normally any, any, normally any waivers or variances or permits need to be noted on the plan, so.
Yeah, I think just, just a waiver from the 20-foot um setback was granted on this date.
And Dennis's comments earlier about the septic part should be on the plans too, so.
That's right.
You have to do a plan anyway.
Yeah, the state approval.
Right. Okay, so, so the motion that's on the table right now is for the um, uh, for the, for the variance. Uh, I'm sorry, for the, for the waiver. For the drive, for the driveway offset. Any further discussion? All right, uh, Ellen is not here. I'm gonna go ahead and call the roll. Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Bakie? Peter?
Yes, you're calling out a turn, Glenn. I'm confused. Yes, I, yes.
Well, you're, you're in a different spot on the screen, so you see.
Right, sorry.
It's Hollywood, it's Hollywood Squares.
Here we go.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
And Glenn Koppelman is yes. And Ellen, uh, if you can hear me, you can, you can vote as well.
Ellen says yes.
All right, thank you. Okay. Are there any other, Dennis, were there any other items that we needed to discuss before we get into into the weeds of, of emotion perhaps?
I made, um, I made note of the comment about the boat storage. Mr. Khalil has three very nice looking boats, I can see from the pictures.
Thank you.
And I'm sure he enjoys using them in the summer, but some, and I'm not really concerned about Mr. Khalil having his boats there. Um, because it's his property and he can certainly do what he wants. I guess my concern is that when he goes and the property gets moved to the next person and all of a sudden different or more stuff gets stored there because it's become a storage area?
No, absolutely not.
So what I guess what I'm thinking is I, I just throwing this out. I mean, I know Mr. Khalil isn't gonna do anything, but we don't know what his successors are going to do.
I had a tenant try to store a little fishing boat there and I went berserk. I went ballistic. I said, you gotta get this out of here. I don't want one, any outside storage. I'm gonna try to make the place as clean as possible. One of the one, what I did, I knocked down a, a shed that they had snow blowers and everything, and I left them with no place to leave anything. So what I have to really do is I have to, once we get this all situated, I gotta build a shed. Maybe one big one with a divider for each unit or whatever, so they could put their, maybe their trash barrels in, their snow blowers or wheelbarrows or whatever. But uh, that's my next step is to build the shed. Once I get this house all done. Uh, that's so I plan on keeping the place neat. I'm definitely not into running a junkyard.
No, I, I guess that, because. Yeah.
Probably bought that, my God.
Yeah, because I've had apartment buildings too and for sure, the tenants.
Anything.
Oh, here, I want my canoe there, I want this.
Anything stored there would be owner, ownership would be myself.
Okay.
None of the tenants.
And I, I also want to add that uh I'm absolutely amazed at the improvements to that building. I had no idea that you could keep the same frame of the building and have it look as nice as it does.
Thank you very much. For that to be the first building you look at when you pull into Kingston, I can't even believe it. I can't even believe it.
All right, Lynn, was that, was that all you had at the moment?
That's all I have.
All right. Anybody else have comments or questions? Dennis?
Uh, yeah, it was brought up tonight that it's considered a commercial uh site now because of the number of units. And I, I was kind of looking at it as a residential unit, but in the, under the stormwater regulations, 90811 point one, it says good housekeeping requirements for reduction of stormwater runoff at existing commercial properties. And it has a list of A through J of items that uh need to be um make sure that uh the, the, the place is kept uh pristine as far as stormwater runoff and a matter, a matter of storing fertilizers, pesticides. Um, uh, any paved areas shall be swept clean of debris, fuel and climate, chemical residue. I could go through and read through these things, but perhaps a note on the plan would be pertinent to make sure that uh the site uh uh complies with 908 point 11 point 1 uh of the stormwater regulations. Uh, as good, good housekeeping requirements, which I'm sure this applicant is going to do, but for down the road, if the site plan changes hands with people in the future, they should be aware that this is part of the regulation, uh, and perhaps it should be a note on the plan uh or not. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
And I just.
Glenn?
May I add something additionally? Um, this um I've tried to, to be very cautious about how I've looked at this as being now a de facto commercial property. Because the action that allows this third unit is one of um, an action by the zoning board of adjustment. And you can't, the zoning board of adjustment can't change the zoning district that a property is in. This property is in um the rural residential zone, which doesn't really allow three-unit properties. We have, we have a zone, it's limited, that allows for multifamily development, so. I, I'm just, and this is, this is but the first of, and we're going to have another property very similar to this. Where the action of the ZBA is going to have resulted in um creating a circumstance that the planning board is being asked to review it and make the site comply with our regulations, but our regulatory scheme doesn't really do that. So it's, so it's very, it's very dicey. Um, so to say that this is now a commercial property, um I'm very uncomfortable with that.
I just wanted to bring it up, Glenn.
I understand, Dennis.
And I just.
I wrestled, I, I, I wrestled with that in my comment letter because my first instinct is to say, okay, apply the site and review regulations. That is not, that is not what is happening here. What is happening here is the zoning board of adjustment has seen fit to grant a variance for this property to have three units in a zone that really doesn't allow that. But it's happened.
Right. Ellie?
Yes, um, when we, when we did the sidewalk in that property, it had four apartments in there, four. And it's rural residential and there were no permits for any apartments.
I understand.
Crosby's. Mr. Crosby was a, it was a single family and quite honestly, uh the fourth apartment didn't really be, was, was a closet. And we, as a ZBI, I don't think, wanted to let anyone go out in the cold. There were children living in there as well. We sent it, we granted the relief for a third apartment. So, and wanted the planning board to make sure that it was up to code. That's really what the intent of sending it back to the planning was. So you have a site plan that ensures that those three apartments in that building were up to code so that we didn't have a problem with electrical or plumbing or septic. That was the intent and it was rural residential. It, I don't think we considered a commercial like um an apartment building.
I know, and I, I absolutely understand.
Yeah.
I absolutely understand why you did what you did. Um, I, I just, I just want the board to be very cognizant that the action that you took can't change the zoning that exists on the site. And the zoning on the site doesn't allow us to consider this multifamily like we do normally under our zoning ordinance. Um. And that's, that's the point I want, that's the point I want to make because we're gonna have this again in short order um on another course.
Well, I, I just brought it up because I heard commercial tonight and that's why I just wanted to bring that up about stormwater issues and and uh so, so I'm glad there was a discussion about it with the board tonight and, and Glenn, I think you're right that, and, and Ellie, I think that this should remain as uh considered a rural residential site and not considered anything to do with commercial entities.
And I, I've been skimming our zoning ordinances and I'm not sure where I find multi, um, more than two units defined specifically as commercial. I guess, and I guess the, the federal government, from all I do in real estate, defines a residential unit as a one to four unit building. And it doesn't get commercial until it's more than four units, so I we, that's something we as a planning board need to look at um over the next few months and, and figure that out and decide exactly how we wanted to find that because I don't see that definition in here.
The only place we speak to development of properties with greater than two units is in the multifamily district that we established off Depot Road.
Correct.
That's the only place.
But we never said that a multifamily unit was a commercial unit. We just say that they're allowed in that commercial zone. We haven't defined.
And then we have a whole set of standards to, that follow the site plan review criteria.
Correct.
Doing them.
Correct.
Something that has to weigh on our minds is that we've taken a horrible building and with the changes he's made, we've made it a lot better and a lot safer situation.
Absolutely. That is absolutely the case. I, I my, my bringing this issue forward, I'm, I'm not trying to discount that at all because that has absolutely happened.
Okay. Is there any further discussion about this plan?
Seeing none, I would like to make a motion that we grant conditional approval to the um, application. And a conditional upon the receipt of the waiver for the driveways and that the septic approval number be added to the plan.
And, and that the waiver request be added as well?
Yes, yes, the waiver request be added to the plan. We received the waiver and it's added to the plan and that the septic approval number be added to the plan as well.
Do you want to fix the uh writing over text?
Oh, yes. And, and that all aspects of the plan have to comply with what's necessary for it to be recorded at the registry.
Okay, and the fuel tank inspection?
That was the one I wanted to.
Yeah.
That was the point I wanted to say. Are we gonna say something about the finalizing the fire department?
That's what I was gonna say. Current permits have to be finalized.
Okay.
Fine with me, sounds perfect.
Added too.
So.
I'll second that since I added them.
All right, so there's a motion by Lynn, second by Peter Coffin, so the um, are you, are you not stating fire department specifically, just leaving it as safety inspections and?
Hmm.
Outstanding permits, that way it covers everything.
Okay. I don't see Ellen, so I can't ask her if she got that motion, but.
She's still listening because she's commenting.
Anything we should know about?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, Ellen.
All right, is there any further discussion then from the board? On the motion? All right, seeing none. I will call the roll and you guys are in different spots again, so be, you know, heads up, heads up, be ready. Uh, Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Oh, Peter's ready. Peter Bakie?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Um, Ellen? If you, if you can, can you message Richard and let him know what your vote is?
Yes.
Okay, and Glenn Koppelman is yes, so that's unanimous. The motion carries. Um, so, uh, Mr. Khalil, congratulations. Um, this is a big step for you, I know. And so we'll be, we'll be getting you some wording on that uh waiver request. And uh, and there will be uh Glenn, there will be a decision letter on this, right, that will go and it'll state the conditions of the approval? Okay.
And once again, from the town of Kingston, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much yourself.
All right. Thanks and good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Alexa. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
All right, it's eight o'clock and I'm gonna suggest we take a five-minute stretch break before we start into the next uh hearing. So Charlie and the folks from Saddle Up, if you can just hang on for another five, we'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll be a lot fresher when we come back, I think. Okay. Back in five.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
Why is it?
I don't know.
Glenn? Glenn?
Hello?
Hey, this is Peter.
Yeah, Peter.
I just, I, I'm gonna be another couple minutes, so um, you can get started without me. I'm just gonna hurry back. I have a little emergency situation I gotta take care of.
Oh, okay.
Put me on hold, I'll be back hopefully, hopefully within five minutes.
All right, thanks for letting us know.
Hey, Charlie, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Good.
So I trust everybody can hear me then?
Yes.
Well, good evening.
No report on what the boom was.
Who was it?
No one knows. Chris is still sitting there, so it couldn't have been too bad.
Yeah, I don't even have any updates from my resources.
And you've got the inside track, so if you don't know. All right. I think we're, I think we're back, most of us. Uh, Peter Bakie just let us know that he had to step away for a few minutes, so uh, we'll go ahead and start and he'll rejoin us when he can. Uh, Ellen, I, I see your name on the screen, so are, are you with us again?
Yes.
Okay. But she's muted.
Ask Glenn to let me in.
Oh, Glenn?
She's in. Can you hear me now? Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very.
We can't see you though.
And you seem to be in a tin can. We hear you.
Whoa.
Well, that's really important thing.
All right, can you hear us though, Ellen?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I can.
All right. Um, I don't know if you caught the fact that Peter Bakie had to step away for a few minutes, so he's, but he'll be back.
Yep, I got it.
Okay. All right, so it's eight oh seven, we'll resume.
It's George Lee at six four two eight 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 oh. I lost uh, my connection on the computer. I don't know, I can't seem to get it back. You can call me at six four two eight 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 oh. I know you're very busy tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, were you talking to the board?
Yes.
Well, we can hear you.
Okay.
You lost, you lost the video, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right. Are, are you, are you satisfied with hearing the audio though?
That's fine.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, and it'd be, in the meantime though, could you just uh, please mute your microphone and then when we open it up for public comment, uh, you can, you can join us then? Thank you, okay. All right. So let me read the public notice for this hearing. And so it's now eight oh eight, start time. This is for Berkshire Dominion Holdings, also known as Saddle Up Saloon at ninety-two Route one twenty-five in Kingston. Tax map R eight lots forty and forty A. And the legal notice reads that the intent of the application is to make amendments to the previously approved site plan in an effort to bring the site into compliance per the selectman's letter of deficiency dated June sixteen, twenty twenty. As well as to clarify operation of the business as desired by the owner. Okay, so uh, we have Charlie Zilch uh, with S E C. Engineering, yes? And Charlie, are you representing the applicant tonight?
I am, I'm here on behalf of uh, Berkshire Holdings.
Okay, and is there someone else is on also from the business?
Uh, Robert Waters, the uh, property owner, he's identified as Rob.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so um, I'll turn it over to you, Charlie. Uh, you can sort of walk us through what, what we're, what you're proposing, what your applicant is proposing, what your, your client is proposing, I should say.
Sure. Well, several months ago, um, well, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, board staff. Um, Rob introduced the application a couple of months ago at the initial hearing. Uh, at that meeting, he received numerous uh, comment letters from the planning board staff uh, from uh, town departments. And uh, as you go through those comments, one of the ones, uh, one of the primary uh, concerns that we focused on uh, with our amended and revised plan was on uh, stormwater management. I don't know if you recall, but Dennis had put together a letter with uh, several concerns and comments regarding, regarding that as well as uh, comments from the Conservation Commission. So if you don't mind, I'll just kind of start with that part of it.
Sure.
Okay, so as everybody knows, this is a pretty well-developed site uh, adjacent to a watershed or Mill Pond. Uh, with many of the existing site improvements within real close proximity uh, to the pond. If you look at sheet three of the plan set, it's probably the best one to follow along with. You can see that the building is pretty much uh, at one point, right at the shore's edge. Uh, the parking lot that supports the restaurant is all within uh, very close proximity to the shore. So um, obviously a, a structure, parking and infrastructure that was built um, considerably uh, prior to current zoning. And um, didn't have, um, I would say, for the most part, there's a, there's a considerable lack of any sort of stormwater management there. There's might be some grass trips in some existing vegetated areas, but that's about it. So Dennis's comments were, were primarily focused on that, seeing what we could do to improve the existing conditions out there, maybe get some of that stormwater runoff, capture it, treat it on-site and, and do something with it, make some improvements. So uh, we uh, asked civil design consultants to work with us on that and they joined in on, on putting together the amended plan and, and the revised plan that we resubmitted here. And just kind of run through a couple of things that they did here. So like I said, if you can get onto sheet three of your plan set, kind of shows it a little bit uh, more clearly. So at the uh, starting at the south end of the restaurant or the parking area, you can see at the very south end of that parking area, we introduced a fifty-eight foot long infiltration trench. It's basically a stone trench with uh, perforated pipe within it. And that'll capture a pretty significant area of the, the parking lot runoff as it travels south. And that'll intercept it before it runs down that fairly steep uh, rock line slope to one of the outflows of Mill Pond. So I think that's a pretty nice improvement there. And then on the western side of the restaurant, between the restaurant, uh, the parking lot, uh, and the shoreline, you can see there's a couple of outdoor seating areas. And the suddenly one is grassed right now. And uh, Dennis is correct in that as traffic, uh, foot traffic uh, is, is uh, in that area, it's gonna basically compact the grass, kill the grass, compact the soil and increase runoff. So what we decided to do there is basically remove the sod and replace it with uh, stone over sand and create uh, another infiltration area. Uh, there's not a deep water table there, there's not many other options that we could go with, but this is a pretty good option. There's also some roof runoff that'll uh, get captured with this area. The same thing for the northerly outdoor seating area. Uh, you can see that on the northwest corner of the building. Right now, that stone, um, I think it might just be stone over uh, virgin soil. So we're gonna have to excavate that, take a look at it. If that's the case, we've got a, a nice little um, typical profile that we can use there and uh, bring in some sands and then put the stone back over it and then again, get a, uh, gain another effective infiltration area. And then lastly, what we did with this um, is the event parking lot to the north of the building on the uh, adjacent lot. Uh, that's where the recycled asphalt was introduced a couple of years ago. Uh, it's a rather thin layer, but uh, it does change the dynamic uh, a bit. It was a, a fairly hard, compacted gravel and the asphalt was brought in on top of that. So you do get a slight increase in, in runoff and none of that was treated. So what we've done here is we're able to capture a pretty significant amount of that parking lot. And we're gonna introduce a, uh, an infiltration basin, which is basically, you can see it, it's on the north side of the, nor the outflow of Mill Pond. Um, there was some parking there, so we're gonna lose a little bit of parking to accommodate this. But it's basically a shallow basin with a four bay. Uh, we're gonna bring the, the runoff from the parking area into the four bay where the sediments can settle out and then it'll spill over into the infiltration area and have time to hopefully infiltrate into the soil and uh, capture those sediments and pollutants before they get into that outflow or into the Mill Pond as it was doing before. So those are kind of what we did, uh, the, the three or four different improvements that I uh, introduced to this plan that I think will help uh, you know, take care of some of those issues that, that currently exist. So I, I know Dennis had a follow-up letter um, regarding those improvements, so I'd, you know, perhaps we can focus on that first. And then we can get into some of the other comments. If Dennis, you want to just kind of run through that?
I think that would be a good place, Dennis.
Um, yeah, do, do you want me to go through all my comments now? Like that's, is that what you're looking for?
Well, no, I think uh, the first five comments, you basically said we hit address from your initial comment letter. Um, I think the one that you indicated that we'd need to have some discussion with the board tonight is your comment number six. Uh, basically, you were talking about the um, the protective buffers and what we've done here and whether or not the board feels there may be a, a need for additional protection or additional measures to be implemented.
So yes, my, my comments, uh, I did uh, the, the, the first four or five comments were addressed. To uh, the stormwater runoff from the gravel area was designed and uh, I think that that's, that's a good thing, the comment was addressed. I wanted to be sure also that when the infiltration basin gets put in that it uh, the uh, the infiltration, the bottom area doesn't get compacted. So, because I've seen some of the infiltration bases where the the loamy topsoil gets compacted to a point that it doesn't uh, allow infiltration. So perhaps the bottom of that basin should not have too much um, topsoil and certainly not get compacted uh, but should have some grass growing and, and allow infiltration. Uh, the comment number six uh, talked about buffers and where there really isn't much of a buffer there. And so.
Dennis, could, could I ask you to hold for just a second before you get into this one? I saw Ellen had her hand up and I didn't recognize it, but um, Ellen, did you have something, a question?
It's muted.
Okay, well, maybe, all right.
She's back.
Ellen, the, the hand was up in your little square.
Uh, my little square is acting on its own, so um, so I'm all set.
Okay, all right, all right, Dennis, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for interrupting you, go ahead.
That's okay, so I just uh, it talks about the uh, my, my previous comment was about the shoreline buffer, which is very uh, uh, most of the, the fifty-foot shoreline is developed around the restaurant. And my latest comment is that the revised plans show improvement in treating stormwater runoff from the existing developed site with little to no changes to developed use in the shoreline buffer. The board should determine if the conditions satisfy the requirements of this section of the regulation. Uh, plans submitted last year shows no storage areas on the north and the south parking areas, which are next to Mill Pond outflow. Uh, this past winter, I observed snow piled at and over the bank where the snow melt, melts, uh, flows untreated and contaminates, contaminants wind up in the outflow. Although signs may be placed and notes added to the plan that control uh, with what controls would the board make to ensure and enforce that the proposed action in this case where pavement extends so much uh, into the buffer zone. And, and again, that, you know, I was talking about more that the south end of that parking lot where the parking spaces are right up against the infiltration trench. And it's, I, I just don't understand how easy, how, how, how plowing snow is going to be able to uh, stay away from that infiltration trench enough that it doesn't get piled up on top of the trench and over the trench, even though that a sign might be placed there. So uh, it's just a, a, a difficult situation to pick up snow from that area and pile it right next to the pond and say that that's going to happen. And, and I don't know how, how that's gonna be policed or controlled in the future. And that's what I was bringing up in, as part of my comment.
So, D- Dennis, were, were, were you gonna go through the rest of your comments? Now, I know that Charlie was suggesting maybe picking certain ones, but.
Yeah, I, I can while, while I, while I get the microphone, I can.
Why don't, why don't, why don't we do that?
Yeah, number seven, the comment was addressed. It was about uh, construction sequence and erosion control notes. That comment was addressed. Number eight, um, basically was a concern about the stop uh, stormwater runoff. Uh, it says, see my comments in item number six above, which I just read. Uh, number nine uh, was uh, the inspection of the proposed work should require uh, should be required during construction. Uh, as-built plan should be required to verify compliance with any approved plan. The added note states that the inspections during construction will be done with the design engineer. I would recommend the board require inspection to be done by a town engine and, and agent or that a compliance or compliance report be submitted by the design engineer in addition to a certified as-built plan. Number ten, that there was no response required. It was about a performance guarantee, if that's what the board wants to have. Number eleven, uh, would recommend uh, compliance with uh, 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 nine oh eight sixteen six and have it noted on the plan about uh, long-term operation and maintenance procedures. Um, a document has been provided and proper title should be added to that and, because according to nine oh eight sixteen six, the document shall be recorded and meet the requirements of the registry indeed. So that document should be edited a little bit for, for um, recording purposes. Um, I had a couple of additional comments uh, about the floating dock. Uh, I know we had talked about that a number of times before, but it, it escaped me about whether that was permitted or not. Uh, we did get a uh, review by a structural engineer that says that that floating dock is structurally stable. Was it part of the shoreline permit? Um, and if a, if the, if it, that shoreline permit was approved, that approval number should be added to the list of state approvals. Uh, number thirteen comment was article nine oh eight. Uh, number 13 comment was article nine oh eight eleven point one. Uh, again, this is similar to what I brought up at the last meeting. Uh, about good housekeeping requirements for reduction of stormwater runoff at existing commercial properties. Uh, should these be listed or a note referencing those, those comments, uh, those, uh. Those requirements added to the plan. Uh, so that's, that's certainly something the board can talk about and, and, and discuss. So those were all my comments. Um, and, uh, certainly can answer any questions along with those.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Um, Charlie, did you want to respond to anything specifically before?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, Dennis makes a great point. Um, you know, you've got an existing parking lot. Uh, the tendency is to just want to plow snow in the easiest. Manner and that's basically straight off the end of the parking lot, the subtly end, and then down the slope it goes. And so you put an infiltration trench in there and then, uh, you know, the, the same activity occurs and you're gonna bury it. And use the, lose the ability that infiltration trench to do what it's supposed to do. So I think really the only thing we could do here, um, is, and I honestly wouldn't expect. Um, the property owner, the manager to be able to, to, uh, back drag all that snow and get everything into that, that central area that we identified as a snow storage area. So I think the only thing I could really think of is, is to perhaps. Put a, a small split rail fence or some sort of a fence along the edge of that subtly parking lot. And then in the wintertime conditions, you're gonna have to give up, uh, several of the parking spaces and store the snow at the end of the parking lot. And so as it melts, it'll melt off into the infiltration trench. You're gonna lose a, you know, four spaces to on either side, perhaps the whole width of that, that end. And that can be an additional snow storage area, but it'll be a snow storage area that'll have. Uh, a drainage device to capture the runoff prior to going down that slope into the outflow. Um, just a suggestion, something I thought about this evening. I thought I, I just throw that idea out there. Somehow we can mark that in the parking lot as wintertime snow storage area, no parking, something like that. I don't know. Just a suggestion. And like I said, this is a site that's been, uh, developed. It's been around since. I don't know when the first, the, the first restaurant was probably in the early seventies. And so, uh, it predates all current zoning, uh, shoreline protection regulations. So. That's always difficult for me is when you're trying to. Make improvements to a site that exists and to no regard to any of those sort of regulations. So you always have to do as best you can. But in this case, we're trying to balance, um, the need for parking for an existing, well-established in, in, uh. Popular restaurant. And then also, um, vegetative buffers. There's vegetative buffers along the. Um, the edge of the pond between the event parking lot that I'd hate to give up any of that area as well. I mean, that acts as stormwater runoff, uh. Treatment as well. So I want to maintain that as much as we can. So trying to squeeze in as much as we can. Uh, to effectively grab as much of that stormwater runoff as we can. Uh, not gonna get all of it. I'm not gonna lie. We can't possibly do that. But we can make some pretty big improvements and I think that's what this plan does. But as far as snow storage, again, somewhat limited, not really limited in the event parking lot. There's plenty of room up there. It's mostly just that parking area down in front of the restaurant. But, um, we do have a couple of areas. I have suggested an area where the outdoor seating would be. They would just basically. Um, remove a couple of sections of fence there and plow into that area. It'll sit on top of crushed stone. Um, where it could infiltrate. And then perhaps if we could, um, still use the one on the northerly end of the restaurant. That's got some buffer between that and the outflow on the north end of the, of Mill Pond. And then maybe use that area on pavement at the end of the parking lot. I think that might resolve it. Um, just your thoughts.
I, I think those are good suggestions, Charlie. I, I, I would, I would probably lean away from. Um, a solution that would require taking fence away and putting fence back depending on the season, because that's gonna be a. A real challenge for the, you know, for the property owner and. It, it probably, frankly, it probably isn't going to get done if, if it's gonna require that much work to reconfigure things. So. I mean, I think, you know, you're. Your suggestion about the, the one down near the trench at the, I assume that's on the southerly side of the parking lot?
It is.
Yeah. Um, you know, whereby in the wintertime, you know, there might be a loss of a, of a, of a few spaces, uh. Uh, and then some sort of fencing there to, to sort of provide that. That, that physical demarcation, if you will, between the parking lot and the, and the trench.
Well, I think we could still probably utilize that area that's, uh, used for outdoor seating. Um, like you said, maybe it's not really practical for plowing to that. But at some point when you get a, a high amount of snow, um, such as we did a couple of years ago. Uh, most sites, uh, and commercial sites, restaurants, I saw them bringing in, uh, machines to move snow. And this could be a, a good alternative area to pile that. In case it gets a little bit too cumbersome down the subtly end of that parking lot, they'll have that additional area they could stockpile snow. So I, I do see some use. I, I hate to remove it from the plan.
Okay. Well, um, the board can, the board can ponder that.
Quick follow-up, Glenn?
Yes, Dennis.
So, so I, I, I think the fence idea, Charlie, is a good idea for that southerly side to, to make sure that, you know. Obviously with loaders there, they can pick snow up and dump it over the, over the fence. But, uh, with the signs there, I hope they wouldn't. Um, but in addition to that, if, if you're gonna put a fence along there to prevent. Snow from being pushed into the outflow of the river, perhaps you could do another fence system. Up at the north end where it says no snow storage area, perhaps another fence up there would be good too, to be able to keep. This snow operators from pushing snow into that part of the, uh, outflow from the pond. As, as well, because it's, it's designated as no snow and maybe you put a sign there, but. Again, a fence is, is more of a restrictive feature than just a sign.
No, I think that's a good idea. So in regards to, um, stormwater, and I guess I'm, I'm asking you directly, Dennis, on this one, uh, you're the expert. Um, do you think there's. Enough, uh, what we did with this, with this proposal. Um, I don't really hon- honestly know what else we could do. On site. Seems like we picked up as much as we could. Um, but I'm open for suggestions. I know you've had a chance to take a good look at this thing.
I, well, I will, to answer your question, I, I think that the, the, from the, uh, event parking area, I think that's a good solution to that. Uh, having, having that infiltration basin, I think that that's a good addition. Uh, it's gonna treat a lot of the water that comes off of that, uh, 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 area that, that has been modified. And so I think that that's a, a good, uh, addition to the plan. Uh, without changing the existing structure and without changing the existing paved area, there really isn't that much you can do. Now, you know, if you're looking at, at, if the town is really, uh, looking at trying to make improvements within the, the fifty-foot buffer. Then you're talking about modifying the parking area, uh, instead of having paved areas for parking, taking away some of the parking places, but. That's not gonna be a good solution for the function of this, of the restaurant. So. I think you've done the best you can as far as stormwater at this time, and I don't know what more, uh, I would recommend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. All right. Uh, Glenn, would you like to, or Charlie, okay, if we go to Glenn's comments or you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Glenn?
All right. Well, actually my comments are just my previous comments because I, as I reviewed the plan, I didn't see a lot of. Um, a lot of attempt made to answer the questions that I held back in, uh, October or November or so. Um, I did notice that one of my comments, one of the typography had been addressed. So I, you know, I. Did a line through that. The others are the site issues I've had signage and parking that's off-site and. Are there easements or, or, or how are we gonna deal with the fact that so much activity on this site goes on? Beyond the property boundaries, actually. Um, and I know that, uh, back, that Charlie did do a response letter to these comments. Um, but most of them were just discussion items. They weren't actually, they didn't result in changes to the plan. So I'm assuming. That they felt they didn't need to. Um. This, this site is rife with issues. I mean, when I, when one of my comments goes to the fact that. There, the parking that they have on site comes nowhere close to what our requirements would be. That's, that's a fact and the, the planning board should probably, um, cover that by granting a waiver. To the requirements because they're never gonna get the number of parking spaces on site that our ordinance requires. Um. So I mean, I, I, I guess my, my thoughts were this meeting was gonna be mostly about stormwater management, which is. The biggest issue, I think, on site and the one that needs to get addressed, um, first, but. You know, I have another fourteen issues of things that we need to address at some point.
Well, like, like for instance, Glenn, the very first one, uh, which, which the way you've put it. Uh. I mean, if, if in fact it requires ZBA action, that's a, that, that's another significant step.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at existing feature here. They're not expanding the size of the building. But the impact on the site has been expanded in the recent past. Um. So I, I, I just, I bring these issues to the board because we need to consider them. How we consider them, um, that's, that is a board decision.
Okay.
Glenn, you, do you want to take a minute to just kind of run through them?
I'm, I'm happy to.
Okay. And then, uh, maybe Rob can chime in with me as well and, and just kind of get these out in the open.
Sure. And they, these are, they're exactly the comments that I had in.
That's fine.
October. Um, so lot R eight forty is in the town shoreline protection district, which has a maximum lot coverage of twenty percent. Note fifteen indicates the existing building coverage is twenty-eight point four. Any exterior, any exterior new proposed activity will require ZBA approval for variance from this requirement. That's the first.
Well, I don't, excuse me, I, I don't understand. If we could probably just summarize from my simple mind what that really means, because I don't understand.
All right. So we, we have a, we have, because we're in the shoreline protection district, a maximum coverage, maximum lot coverage. And we already exceed that. Um, and, and I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to understand that the building itself exceeds that. Any additional paving on the site, um, is going to expand that. And if that happens. We don't have, the, the planning board doesn't have the authority to allow a greater maximum building coverage. That's, that's a zoning requirement and only the ZBA could provide that relief.
So i- if we're trying to address that point, um, I don't think we're trying to add any paving. So what I'm trying to do, um, Glenn, is to just be able to check off. You say there were fourteen items. I just wanna make sure that we can specifically address everything in plain language. So that, uh, we can move through the process and then obviously meet your concerns. So if we look at number one, providing that we're not looking to increase the. Um, then we should be okay with number one. Is that correct?
Yes, although. He- here, here's, here, here's, I think, a point of contention on the budding parcel where you're still in the shoreline protection district. And there's still, um, a requirement for building coverage. What has happened is the previous surface of that parking area. Allowed some amount of infiltration by stormwater. With the material that now paves that area, um, it's not impervy, I mean, it's not pervious material. And so that's gonna constitute a, a complete additional increase in impervious surface.
But we're addressing that with the infiltration trench, correct?
For stormwater management purposes perhaps, but not for the, not for the. Coverage of the lot from a shoreline protection district standard.
But what, here's the problem is, like, what do we do? So when, when we're looking at a lot of these comments, we, there, there are some, there are comments and then there are. Um, measures or, or there are things that we have to address. We can't address a comment, but we can address a corrective action. So in this particular situation where we have, I, I, I get your point, Glenn, is that the, um. That the, the, uh, ground asphalt, whatever constitutes further in, um, uh, lot coverage. But let's, I guess with, we're, we're here, we're gonna try to move forward with what we have. And that, again, the stormwater runoff, we wouldn't have had to do that had that surface, um, not been modified. So we're, we're taking the action of adding the infiltration trench in there, which hopefully addresses that and providing there is. Uh, no more request for, um, an increase of coverage. Hopefully we can move from that point.
Well, another fact too is, is the restaurant lot, which is lot forty. Lot forty, that's the one that said twenty-eight percent and, and twenty percent's the maximum coverage allowance. We're not making any change on that. I understand what, what you're saying, Glenn, that we've introduced, uh, recycled asphalt. And that's on lot forty A. And lot coverage on forty A right now, as it stood, was, was minimal. It was only four point nine percent. I think that was just the, the structures, a couple of buildings, things like that. I'd like to run through the exercise then and see what the actual coverage is. If you want to consider, uh, recycled asphalt is an, an impervious surface. Um, I'd like to see if it is over twenty percent.
That would be beautiful.
And get you that numbers. But in regards to the restaurant lot, we're not making any changes there. So the twenty-eight percent is what exists and has always existed. Um, do you think that's?
And that, and, and I, I think that that was what I said in my first comment, was that if there was no additional. Um, coverage on that site, then I think what we're dealing with is in existing condition and that would require ZBA action.
Okay. So, and I want to thank everybody.
We can get the.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Glenn. I'm saying now I, now I get where we're going with number one. So although I, I started this, I want to think that I'm clear. Well, now, so my questions have been answered now and I, and I interrupted something between you and Charlie, Glenn. I apologize.
All right. So if I come up with a, a calculation that says we're over twenty percent on forty A, then, um. Rob and I will have to make a decision of whether or not we remove some of that, that recycled asphalt to get ourselves into the twenty percent.
That's right.
Or we're going to zoning board of adjustment.
The zoning board for ZBA relief, correct?
Agreed. Yep. That's fine.
All right. Um, the, the use requires a conditional use permit because the property is within the shoreline protection district. That's something that's a, a fairly common. Um, requirement in town because we have so much shoreline. So that's.
And I'll, uh, I'll certainly submit a request for that, uh, as the plans are developed and reviewed here.
So hold on, just because I'm trying to keep track of this, Charlie, too. What are we requesting in number two?
It's, uh, it's conditional use permit.
It's a conditional use permit for the use because it's in the shoreline protection district.
What, what is the conditional use? The restaurant?
Yes.
What do we conditionally?
Yes, the, all, all commercial uses, if they're allowed in the shoreline protection district, require a conditional use permit. And that's a, that's a. An enterprise that the planning board has to go through. There are, I think, five criteria. Maybe it's four that the board has to. Um, act in the affirmative for, um, in order for that conditional use permit to be granted.
And that's something, Rob, I could submit, uh, on the next, uh, round of revisions here.
This applies to all commercial businesses on any waterfront?
And I did understand, Charlie and I had a discussion, uh, I don't know, two months ago, that, that this hearing really was going to focus on stormwater management. Because that was, uh, seemed to be the, one of the big drivers as far as everyone's concerned about the safety of the site environmentally. So. That's, I, I don't take issue with that being the focus of this meeting. These comments were offered back in October. They're not new. Um, and so I.
But my assumption is, and maybe Charlie can correct me, that if we, I, I, I know that when I sat down, I tried to address. Um, every comment from every person as, as best as we could. Um, but some of them were kind of vague in their, um, in their descriptive response. And, uh, more like comments rather than, than, um, instructions. And that's why I'm trying to figure this out here. So.
Okay. Well, like, I can't be any clearer in two and three, the conditional use permits are required. I don't know. I don't know another way of saying.
I, I get that. That was a simple question. That, that was the question of a four-year-old trying to understand what grown-up building. Um, that's all that really was. I wasn't questioning it. I was just trying to, as I'm going down here to get that. And as I asked you, that is a, that is a. Permit that's required by all business, all commercial businesses on the water, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so that's number two. And then number three was the same thing?
It, it, it's just that it's a different, it's a conditional use permit because you're also in the offshore protection district. So.
And a lot of that, uh, Rob, relates to, um. What your action is with the plan. And like I said, I didn't, I didn't want to submit these, these two conditional use permit requests. Until we've gotten a little bit further under the review. Uh, if there was gonna be any substantial changes. So I just wanted to make sure we're. Uh, if there was going to be any substantial changes. So I just wanted to make sure we're pretty close before we submit those. I didn't want to waste the board's time.
Okay. And just, and it was reading, um, Glenn's, um, body language in tone on it. I, I, it seemed as though he was a little bit displeased or I don't mean to speak to you, Glenn, like you're not there. But it seemed like he was displeased with the fact that things, things weren't addressed. And I kind of want to go down and, and see what we didn't address and perhaps why we didn't address it.
Yeah, no, you're, you're misreading my, my body language. I fully expected this to be a discussion about stormwater management. Because I've provided these comments before, I didn't want to not take the opportunity to say, these are things that still need to be addressed.
Okay. So why don't, i- i- if we could quickly, you have 14 items?
Yes.
Then again.
Thirteen, thirteen, because one was completely addressed.
All right, Charlie, do you have those 13 in front of you?
I do.
All right, Charlie, can, can you go, anyone that you don't fully understand or how we can address? Because I know that you and I talked about this stuff and we tried to address what we could. But is there anything on that list that you don't think you and I can go with without the board's into our help on clarification?
I don't think there should be anything. And I asked
We talked about, um, snow storage, um,
And actually you accomplished number six. I didn't strike it through, but you did provide, um, photographs.
Well, there we go. See?
All right. Glenn, I just want to make sure that you and the board understand that we certainly want to address every one of your concerns. Dodge any of them. That's why I don't want to take up your time if there are things we don't need clarification on. But if there are, I think this is the best opportunity.
Sure.
One of the things that, um, Glenn did bring up and, uh, I probably gave you a, a non-response response is basically the parking. Uh, you noted, this was your comment number seven. You noted that a, a number of the, the, uh, parking spaces within the state right of way. And this was something back when we were going through the process in 2014, 2015 was a, was a big point of discussion on the plan is that you have parking within the state right of way. And at that time I reached out to, uh, DOT. I think I, I started with district six and they put me in touch with, uh, a gentleman up at, um, in Concord and basically just asked the question. I said, you know, you guys have made improvements to one twenty-five, uh, when you, uh, changed the location of Old Coach Road and improved, uh, uh, the actual travel way of one twenty-five that the parking remained. And they said, yes, it did. Um, it had always been there. They had no uh, intent to change the parking or remove it from the right of way. They had no immediate plans to do anything with that area. And they were going to allow the parking to remain as is, along with the sign, that sort of thing. And so as the discussion developed with the planning board, we talked about, okay, so say something changes in the future, maybe when we're all gone, something changes.
Hopefully, Charlie.
So we wanted to leave something for the next planning board and applicant to, uh, to work with. So what we did is we looked at that, uh, event parking area. And what I did is kind of ghost outlined, uh, where we could put all those parking spaces. And we noted that if you go and do that, then, um, it's going to require a site plan review as well as a shoreline permit. And, um, improvements to stormwater, which at the time in 2014, we weren't required to do anything. So now we're doing the improvements to stormwater. Uh, so we're taking a step in the right direction. But at this point, there still is no, uh, plans to change or affect one twenty-five in this, this area. So the parking is probably going to be fine for a number of years to come.
Can, will they write, will they write a letter?
Oh, get a letter out of DOT?
To that effect?
That I don't know.
Here's the rub. When, uh, when, when we talk with other people and tell them to move stuff invariably, they say, well, what about Pond View? So it's not even called Pond View anymore. But I immediately know when someone talks to me and argues with me that they're aware of just what isn't on site on property on your parcel. And it makes it very, it would make it so much easier if I could say there's an agreement with DOT.
Charlie, I, I could absolutely, I have no problem picking up the phone and, and seeing if I can get some sort of response.
Charlie, do you have any email correspondence confirming what you just said?
Probably not. I think it was a phone conversation from some time ago.
Okay.
I, I probably have notes somewhere, handwritten notes and whom I talked to, I could dig that up. But it doesn't really matter now. I can, I can just pick up the phone again or, or email and try and get some sort of response from DOT and see if I can get him to commit to something.
I, I, I can look. I think I have something to the effect also. Um, but let me ask you just if, if we look at this in the worst case scenario, what happens if the state of New Hampshire says that we're not, uh, we don't want to put it in writing? I just want to, what does that look like?
Um, at least in discussion, and that was the answer that they gave. And clearly their actions are showing that they're not going to impact you negatively right now. Um, but it really does weaken our argument when we ask other people to remove stuff from the right of way. Um, there was a time when DOT was very forward about removing signage and whatnot from the right of way to the point that they made a sweep down through both Brentwood and, um, Kingston, saying they were going to saw off signs. Um, that doesn't seem to be the new DOT. Um, but it doesn't remove the issue that I, I look at a plan, I have to understand that I'm either not saying anything to the planning board about having a lot of activity going on off-site, uh, um, which then somebody could tell it me for later in my life as to why I don't talk about these things. So I'm just going to bring them up. And the board has to come up with a way of, of realizing and rationalizing how we're going to deal with it. It would be a lot easier with something from DOT.
Okay. So I, and I understand your answer. Your answer is we get something from DOT or we have a discussion about it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Fair enough, Charlie. I, I think I might have
That's no problem. And like I said, I, I could do that. But also in defense of, of this particular site, uh, should some other applicant come in and, and point to the site and say, well, they've got parking out in the right of way. Well, it's true, but we also have a backup plan where we could replace that parking on a lot that's within an easement that, that's, uh, captured for our lot. And the other point that I would make is to, to make that improvement, to cut off all that pavement out of the right of way and to build that parking area out back in a shoreline protection zone, a shoreline protected zone is a pretty significant impact. Uh, this is the case where you're best to leave it alone as is. It's there, it's established, uh, and it's within a shoreline impact zone. So my thought on it.
That originally that was my thought as well, Charlie. And then two years ago, I went on site and saw that that overflow parking was no longer, um, the environmentally pristine area that I used to look at. It was now, it was now an elevated surface area. Um, and that wasn't what I thought it was going to be. So
Okay.
It is what it is. We're, we're dealing with what we're dealing with.
Sure. All right. But, um, I will try and attempt to get some sort of correspondence or some sort of, uh, communication with DOT.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, so that takes us, uh, oh, number four is honestly, I'm pretty much saying aren't we illegally existing facility that has to deal with a requirement, the zoning ordinance that came after the fact? So, um, I, I think that that's an issue that the board has to feel comfortable dealing with. And it could very well be that they simply say, you don't, you're not complying with this because this came after the fact and you're dealing with an inactive existing condition.
That's in regards to landscaping?
Yes. Right. In the, in the C three zone, uh, which the C three came into existence after.
After this property was developed.
Right.
Um, so we've done seven, we've done eight. Nine is, nine is a really standard site plan review request requirement. Um, it's always existed, um, sure that you show distances to existing water and sewer facilities to a distance of 200 feet from the existing facilities on a buddy parcel. So that's a, that's a sighting thing and, uh, and, and, uh, something that you, isn't really a difficult thing. Um, we've already talked about the existing sign, which is number 10. Charlie alluded to, to number 11 with the 50-foot landscape buffer that's required between lots, um, forty A and R eight forty-two-one. Um, it's not detailed on the plan. It would, it would impact the number of parking spaces in the parking area. In addition, the shoreline protection district requires monitoring of activities within 75 feet of the shoreline. On lot forty, much of the new proposed outdoor activity is very close to the shoreline. More detail should be provided that this activity will not detrimentally affect Mill Pond. Um, the applicant showed the parking lot formula that there's parking lot formula in this case is that you're showing existing parking. And it hasn't, it doesn't comply with our, with our requirements. So I think the way to address that is through a waiver request.
Okay, waiver on, on required parking.
On required parking. Yeah.
All right. Can, with the waiver, am I allowed to include the area of the parking that's within the state right of way as part of my number?
I think that you do at this point because that's what the existing circumstance is.
Okay, I could submit the waiver for that.
Um, uh, parking area landscape is all, landscaping is also required. And again, this is a regulation that came into effect long after you were established. So, um, asking for relief of that in some manner, I, I think is something that the board would consider. I don't know how they'd vote on it, but I, I would think that they would, they would look at it, um, reasonably.
Okay.
Um, and my final one is the proposed, the proposal incorporates the use of the floating dock. That's always been a sticky issue. It's, it not from, not particularly from my point as a planner, but it is an, uh, sticky issue, um, from the point of view of other inspectors in town and at one point finding it unsafe and unfit. So I just wanted to hear back from the Kingston Fire Department if they still felt the same way about the dock that they felt when it was previously discussed.
Well, in, in regards to that dock, um, noted that, uh, we had a structural engineer take a look at it, offer up his opinion as far as the actual physical structure itself in, in the, uh, use of it. And, uh, he felt that it was sound in both respects. So how do we, how do we permit this thing moving forward? Uh, I know the last time in 2014, 2015, the board was uncomfortable with it. Nobody knew what the status of the dock was. It, it was moving around a bit from one spot to another. So we asked, uh, we were asked to omit it from the plans and we did at the time.
Right. By way of a note, I think.
Right. And so here it is. They'd like to use it. Uh, they've got a structural engineer to offer up an opinion on it. What's the next step for us? Is, is, is it just to have the fire department review that, uh, professional engineer's, uh, opinion? And if they're okay with it, is this board okay with it? How does this work?
Yeah. I mean, I think in the past, we've looked to, um, the, the guidance of our safety inspectors. And when they came back with a negative take on it, the board took that feedback and that was what directed them. So I would think that we would need feedback from them again.
Okay.
And, and I'm speaking as the planner, there's a whole, um, Zoom board here that, uh, that can talk as planning board members. So
And, and one of them is looking to weigh in, Lynn?
Looks like it.
Yeah. So I agree that obviously it needs to be inspected and be safe. But beyond that, I would think that you'd be looking for a state permit for the dock or, uh, for grandfather, uh, docks, the state has a new program where they can be registered. But I would think you'd want a registration or a permit for the dock as well.
Dennis did ask, uh, or I don't think he asked, but he made a, a point earlier whether or not that was included in the shoreline permit and it was not. So, um, I think you're right, Lynn. I think there is a, a, a process for existing docks, uh, for permitting through the state. I could explore that and see if we can get something for that as well. Richard?
A couple of comments. One, as far as the floating dock, that has been a problem area because all the work was done without permits. After they were told several times to get permits, they continued to work on it without permits. Which that's what a lot of this whole situation has brought, you know, brought to a head is that so much stuff there has happened as they want to do it and not with the, you know, blessing to do it. And I feel like so far this meeting has been something we could have done in a technical review committee. That it's not part of the, you know, overall site picture that we're here to talk about. You know, the dock, the bands outside, the outdoor seating, you know, all the things that this site is doing that it's never had approvals. That's what gets us all the complaints, the selectmen.
Mr. Wilson, I'm confused. Are, are we here to talk about this stuff tonight or, or are we not?
It sounds like they decided to talk about nothing but stormwater.
No.
No, no. All right. I, I, I think that was, that was an item that they, you know, the, 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 the technical folks and staff felt was a, a critical item to get through. And, uh, and we're endeavoring to do that, but all those other issues are still on the table, Richard.
I mean, to me, getting phone calls constantly because a band is playing at 11 o'clock at night on the roof is more of an issue than where the water runs. I know the water's important, but to have all the neighbors putting up with that outdoor band with no approvals and that type of thing is what has generated the majority of the complaints we've gotten.
All right. Well, I, I don't think there's any bands playing on the roof. It's kind of cold out. But Mr. Wilson, we need to take this meeting and keep it productive because I was feeling good that we were clarifying whatever concerns there were in order to move forward. So either if, if you can offer me something that you'd like me to particularly address, then we can. But otherwise I feel as though that it's going to confuse the progress that we're making this evening.
Well, okay, first, 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 we're not there's a, there's a lot of items to go through and, and we're, we're, we're making our way through, Mr. Waters. And, uh, Richard, just, I'm assuming that some of the items that, uh, that you, you've started to bring up are items that were perhaps identified in the selectman's letter from last year.
Yes.
And, and, and we will be going through all of those. We will. Uh, whether it's tonight, I don't know. But, um, Ellen?
Oh, um, I was just going to sort of, I think, say some of what you're saying that it sounds like tonight we're going to be working on stormwater management, but it doesn't sound like all of the issues could possibly be talked about tonight because we've already, you know, it, we've already been talking about it for a while and we haven't really been able to address anything other than some of the environmental issues, which Charlie is still going to look into and get some more information and come back to the board. And maybe they'll be addressed while we then go on to some of the other issues that department heads have brought up, the board of selectmen have brought up, but I don't see us doing everything tonight.
Well, like I said, the site's, uh, you know, it's an existing site. It's had some history. There's no doubt about that. Um, an awful lot of comments and I tried to address them as best I could. And I know to try and go through every one of them tonight, we'll be here till, uh, till tomorrow. And I don't think anybody wants to do that. Uh, Richard suggested perhaps moving this into a TRC format.
Well, I'm talking about the storm, the stormwater part of it could have been handled separate from this meeting. So we could have gone on to the other issues. Because I'm not a stormwater person and I don't think the majority of the board are stormwater person. We require on, rely on Dennis for his judgment. And later they could have come to us and say, well, this is what we've worked out and this is the best solution and we could have talked about it. Just, just an opinion.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, while, while we're on the subject of the, of the selectman's letter, um, I'm, I'm guessing that, I mean, I still have a, a, a whole list of department comments here to read, which I want to do because the department heads took the time to respond to the plans that you guys submitted. So, um, Charlie, I'm assuming you have a copy of the letter from the select board from last year and
Yeah, I do.
Okay. And, and, you know, at some point, uh, it would be, it would be good to have, uh, you guys address those points as, as part of the, as part of the use of the, of the site. Cause a lot of them deal with the use issue, which is what Richard was talking about. Okay.
Charlie, did, did we put a lot of, did we address those in the amended site plan application? Um, I, uh, the selectman's letter, because I know that we, we took a, a lot of time to make sure that we went through that letter. So Charlie, I, I just want to make sure that we're all, I just want to be on the same page with everybody because that's the only way we can move forward.
Yeah. I think what we had done in our response is because with all the other town departments, uh, conservation, Dennis's comments, I think those were all more or less covered. I don't think when I submitted back, I addressed that particular letter.
Did, did we address things like what we were going to do for music or, uh,
Yes.
Types of issues. I think that that's what Mr. Wilson, I, I've heard him mention that in number Types of issues. I think that that's what Mr. Wilson, I I've heard him mention that a number of times, so that that's obviously a concern on Mr. Wilson's mind.
Yeah, so like I said, I mean, obviously, we're going to be going back for another round of review here. Um, as the chair indicated, there's uh some more comment letters to be. To read read through. Um, on my next response, I'll take that that um. Selectman's letter and and speak directly to that as well. But I think a lot of the comments in that letter were also covered in the review letters that we received at the first meeting. So in a kind of an indirect way, I did try and respond to that as best I could, but I could I could speak to it more directly on the next round of revisions.
Okay.
All right, one other thing of the is Rob and I have been getting together on this. Um, the site is uh an existing established site. Uh, it's been in operation for an awful long time. And the point I I made with Rob and he he agrees is that we can't expand on the site anymore. It's pretty much. At its capacity. And so some of the things that we're trying to do correct here is is we are trying to to. Bring the site back into compliance. I know they they put a uh an ice cream stand window in. And that to me is an expansion of the use. It tells people that normally be driving by a restaurant, welcome in for an ice cream. So more traffic, more customers, which to Rob's point is better for his business, but it's an expansion of the use. So. As part of this application, this response, we've agreed to take that out. Uh, the window can stay, they can just serve, you know, the outdoor customers their normal uh food and drink. But not to advertise it as as an ice cream stand. And so trying to do things like that, to bring the site back to compliance, get rid of some of the on building signs, things like that, we're offering up to do. So. And I know like in regards to outside entertainment, we're trying to put some restrictions on that. So. We're trying to bring it into compliance and also meet everybody halfway. So Rob's definitely trying to get some things done here. I know, like I said, there have been some issues. Uh, the town's butted head with with the operator at the site. And so we're trying to get past that and and get this thing uh back up and running and everybody happy here. End of my rant.
All right. Okay, I. I'd like to go through the comments that we have from some some of the town departments. Uh, get those on the record and make sure that uh that uh Charlie, you and Mr. Waters are aware of these and. That uh that when we, when we have another round of discussion, that that perhaps some of these will need to be addressed as well. So this first one uh is from the building inspector. It's dated April nineteenth, addressed to this board for this application. And. The comments are actually. In response to SEC's letter of three ten twenty one. So Charlie, it must be one of your more recent. Uh. Documents.
It is.
Yes, your response letter, okay. So these are, these are comments relating to that. And the first one is for I must be item number eight on page three. Uh, snow storage was areas, snow storage areas were addressed. On approved. Site plan D thirty eight seven oh one dated two three fifteen, but never complied with. Okay. I I mean, we've already talked a lot about snow storage tonight, so uh it sounds it. Correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds as if uh under this new plan, they're being reconfigured.
Well, yeah, I'm going to revise the plan yet again. Basically, the discussion tonight.
Right, okay. All right, uh, his next comment is related to your item number fourteen on page three. The consulting engineers report for ADA compliance references the ramp from the land to the gazebo. As handicapped accessible. No mention of the accessibility of the path of travel route. To the ramp or the conditions once upon the floating gazebo or dock. Will. Will evaluate if further review is required as per letter from SEC. So that appears to be a comment as opposed to a question. Did, does that make sense to you, Charlie?
Yeah, I think I understand what he's saying. He said basically the the engineer that was hired to review the floating dock. Noted that it has handicap accessibility to get onto the dock, but once you get on the dock. Do you still retain that ability to have handicap access?
Right.
In perhaps leading up to the ramp.
Right.
Okay, we can look at that.
Okay. Uh, number. Oh, numbers four and five on page four. If these items are approved by the planning board, then building, electric permits and fire department approvals will be required. I'm not, I don't know what.
I I can help you with that. He's he's talking about uh what I just mentioned about the ice cream window.
Oh, okay.
The modification and then there was uh. Some modification to the upper floor. Um, and it was converted from what it was before, which was just uh. Storage and office space, and that's going to be reverted back to storage and office space. But I think he just wants to be able to confirm that that actually happens.
All right.
Done properly.
Okay. So that's the extent of building inspector comments uh on those plans. Uh now the fire department also dated April nineteen. And there are four bullet points. The first one, the second floor office will be used as an office. And storage area and will be signed for no public access, no public access in quotes. That's a statement. I don't know if he's asking a question or if he's looking for affirmation that that's the case or.
Sounds to me like he's looking for that. So in order for that to be in use the way it is, he wants a sign saying no public access on the door. That's that's what it sounds like to me.
Okay.
All right. I guess that makes sense. Let's. The second bullet, the deck off of the office is intended for office staff only. As an area of refuge. That's the end, that's the end of the statement.
I think what he means by that is that uh that we uh there was some confusion about building steps down there as an egress. Dating back to four years ago, but we need to build steps um going down there. So it was an egress. As it stands right now, the fire department doesn't want any public up there. They only want it for use for. He just said, but I think that once the stairs go in, then I um that will change. The discussions that we've had, so this is somewhat familiar to me.
Okay, uh, the third bullet says any alterations, additions or the use of the floating. Uh, it says bar, but I assume it means dock. Oh, or is it a bar? Whatever. Is subject to code review by SFC Engineering on behalf of the town who has overseen this project since twenty seventeen. So again, that's that's informational for for you guys. Uh, and the fourth bullet, see attached documents for additional info. All right, so. This is a letter from Robert Cummings and Associates. Are you, Charlie, are you familiar with? With them?
That's a fire engineer.
And it looks. It looks as though these additional documents that he's attached. Uh, sort of point to the bullets that that were in there because it's. The first one is talking about the deck uh being. Deck access from the second floor office spaces intended for office use only, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. The secondary floor balcony area and the dining area will be used as an office and storage area. Uh, signed to be no public access. So that's that's just sort of confirming what. What his comment letter had said and and the, again, the fourth one corresponds to the regarding the the floating bar. And uh. Okay. Looks like there's a the letter that's attached from room and Gar Garis Garasino. The structural engineers that did the review of the gazebo that's attached here for reference. All right, and that appears to be it for the fire and then. Uh, Conservation Commission. Has the following comments. Uh, Kingston Conservation Commission checked on shoreline rules for when the property owner owns part of the property below a lake or pond. Uh, Darlene Forest Shoreland, Sherlin Section Supervisor, Shoreland Program. Land Resources Management, blah, blah, blah. Uh, ownership. Ownership of the lake bed does not affect shoreline jurisdiction. Okay, I I I'm not quite sure what what is being said there, but. Uh, let's see, the aerators require a permit from DES. It's a, it's a statement. Uh, and finally, according to our minutes on this project from December, the planning board had asked. For an updated plan of the whole property to accurately portray existing conditions, especially snow storage and impervious areas. Uh, we have not received such a plan for review. Well, I believe that the new set of plans does have that stuff, does it not, Glenn? And Charlie?
It does.
Glenn, they sent us that comment back in February. Oh, they were waiting for plans and we didn't get any. And so that was a comment that we got before the new plans went out. And I don't know that they've met since the new plans were distributed.
Okay, all right, thanks, Ellen. I now I see the date at the top of the sheet, February second of twenty twenty one, okay. Okay, thank you. And the final one is from the Health Department and. No comment. But that wasn't from our current health inspector. That was from our former health inspector. So. Does our new health inspector have any comment?
No.
Okay. Okay, that is the extent of department comments for this. All right, so. Well, we've gone through a lot of stuff tonight. I don't know. Does the board have? Oh, I, we do have someone from the public and I need to make sure that we do public comment, but does. Does the board have any questions or comments at this time before I take public comment? Glenn, do you see anybody else waiting to uh come in on the waiting room?
No.
No. Okay. So it appears that Mr. Leet, uh, who has unmuted himself. Uh, can you still hear me, Mr. Lee?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and uh rather than asking you to go through the gyrations of typing into the chat, uh if you could. Uh, we have your name, but if. But it. What's that? What, Glenn?
I I was just saying, let's don't do the chat then.
No, we're not going to do the chat. But I am going to ask Mr. Lee to state for the record his address, please.
Yeah, I'm uh very concerned about the loud music.
No, 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 Mr. Mr. Lee. Listen, listen to me, please. I I need you to state your address for the record.
Oh, ninety one twenty five Kingston, New Hampshire.
Okay, okay, perfect. Now, go go ahead and and ask your question or make your comments.
Yeah, I'm extremely concerned about the loud music I see, whether they want to have outdoor live entertainment till ten o'clock at night. It's the 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 sound of the loud music is beyond controlled. It's very, very annoying. And if I gotta listen to that till ten o'clock every night. You know, it's it's just, it's just not fair. And I think it affects a lot of people. I live right next door to the pond view. Can tell by the address, but it affects hundreds of people within the neighborhood, outside of the neighborhood, can hear this music like over a mile away. And I'm totally against it, live, live music.
Okay. Did did you have anything else uh that you that you wish to comment on?
Nope, just by considering over the loud music.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Uh, it it sounds like we're going to be getting into more of a discussion with regard to the to the to the uses, which would include things like the. Uh, the music and I'm not sure if we're going to do it tonight, but. I guess that's, I'll have to ask the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
This plan needs a lot of work and I don't see any point in going on later and later and later. I mean. You haven't, we haven't even touched on the selectman's letters and all the things that were done or mentioned, so.
Richard, I think you, I think you got a good point, Richard, but we've never felt that way till all all other nights. We aren't lying till eleven thirty. I just think we should address everything tonight. We can deal with it another night.
All right, Mr. Baiki is suggesting we continue on. Is that the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, I think we can uh go ahead and and start addressing those items, realizing that we uh. We still have to come back to the other items later, so um. You know, it's.
Okay, do we, do we have the? I'm sorry, I do not have a copy in front of me. It's one of the things I didn't print, I don't think, and that's the copy of the selectman's letter from. From that date. Does anyone have a copy of it?
I do not.
Yes, Ellen.
Maybe that's. Maybe this would be.
Ellen, Ellen, Ellen.
In, yes, yep.
You 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 you. You you were breaking up there. We didn't get a, didn't get a good clear uh signal from you.
But let me try again. Is this better?
So far.
Can you hear me better? Okay, I hear, yes. I was just going to say that perhaps.
Oops. Oops, now she's gone completely.
It was better for a sec.
It was.
Back. She needs to unmute.
Okay. Nope.
I hate my phone. Okay.
Can hear you now.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I'll say fast. Perhaps it's a good break point. Because then I can get a copy of the selectman's letter, get it out to the board, so the next time we talk, everybody will have it, know what everyone's talking about. I'm done.
Well, you got it all in that time. That's good.
Well, I do have a copy of the letter. I could run through it fairly quickly. You know, at some point, we're obviously going to have to continue. We're uh. A ways away from uh any sort of consideration of any sort of conditional approval on this. But I could run through that. Um, like I said, we've touched on quite a few of the points in it already.
Okay.
Uh, it's up, it's entirely up to you.
Yeah, if you've got it, Charlie, why don't, why don't we just run through them and uh. Uh, see where, see where we are.
Okay, so can I ask, can I ask a question though, Glenn? Are we just running through them? Are you going to expect the board to address them?
Well, I don't know, Ellen. I I think that's going to be at the discretion of the board.
Because I will bring up that I, and this was why I thought it might be a good breakpoint to get the information. Is that I think the current plan, other than stormwater. Um, it looks like there are a lot of assumptions. On preexisting uses that were never approved. So I I see that they're on the plan as preexisting. But they were not legally preexisting. So I think that this might bring up a lot more discussion. Then then you might want to have this evening. I don't know. Which I think was part of the selectman's letter. So that's why I'm wondering, are you just going to go through the list or? Should we all be affected to talk about them this evening?
Well, if I could just ask a question and just so I, this is the first I've heard of this. Wh-what are the things that are preexisting but were not legally preexisting that that we're referring to?
They can go through.
Ellen, I'm sorry, your bandwidth broke up. Could you say that again?
I think that that would be part of the selectman's letter, but there are things like. Some of the preexisting outside seating and things of that nature, which I'm not saying. Is should all of it should be denied, but there are a lot of things that I talked about that were not approved by the plan board. You came in to talk about them, but then you pulled the plans, so they were never approved.
No, I think preexisting was referred. No, I think pre-existing was referring to what, the pre-existing uses of the Pondview dating back 40 years, I think that that's what that referred to, Charlie, am I mistaken on that?
Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to go through the, the letter, I'm more inclined to agree with that. But like, you know, if you want to go through the letter, I can go through the letter, or if you want to take a break and, and continue this, either or, it doesn't matter to me. Like I said, just looking here at the letter, we have touched on a lot of the different points in that letter, a few things we have not.
Maybe, would it, would it please the board, maybe, do we adjourn this meeting and then maybe schedule again so that we can address a lot of the stuff that we discussed tonight, and we can look in more better prepare for the getting in-depth on the other issues? Because I think as, as Glenn had said, I, I think we were here primarily for the the water management, and then we, I, I figured we would discuss everything, but I didn't know that we would be trying to address everything this evening. And it just might be more productive if we were better prepared for it.
And, and Mr. Waters, I'm, I'm fine with that, it's, it's but it, it's really going to be a vote of the board to, to to either continue this to another date or to continue talking about it, and we had one board member who was suggesting that we continue talking about it, so that's, that's sort of, we're, we're in that middle ground right now.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
When we, when we submit this response, and any application, not just this one in particular, do the selectmen get a copy of the response or the planning board application or anything?
Uh, yes.
They do.
Well, Richard, you do, don't you?
No, I mean, I, I've seen no response to that letter.
Okay, so, so my suggestion is then, is this.
Excuse me, the selectmen?
I'm sorry.
The selectmen get a copy of any, any resubmittals, right, Ellen?
They got a copy of the same thing that the planning board members got. They don't comment, but they.
No, no, I, I said we didn't get a cop, a response to our letter.
Oh.
I know we get plans and that type of thing.
Yeah, Charlie, the, the, the Select Board is one of many departments that gets, gets copies of all of the submittals that come into the planning board, so that they have the opportunity to review it and comment if they wish.
Okay, so with that being said, then I've got more comment letters that have been generated based on my response. I've got some changes to make based on the conversation that we've had tonight. And I never did speak directly to the selectman's letter, like I said, a lot of the points on here were incorporated in, in other people's comments, but I could respond directly to that, so that when the selectmen get the new plan set in the response, they'll be looking at you know, responses to their comments directly. So I would like to do that.
Okay.
And give them the opportunity to, to review it as well.
Okay, well, that's gonna, I think that's going to end up being a much more productive path. Peter Baiki, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, given where we are and what we've talked about, I, I you know, there are a number of things that that, that, that you guys are going to need to, to work on. And especially if you can address those, those selectment comments from the letter specifically, that.
Just for the record, the selectman's letter is generated based on comments from inspectors and departments that are not getting any response to their inquiries, I guess, so we, we put it in writing and hopefully think that it means a little more meeting, meaning coming from us, but.
All right, um, I, I I'm, I'm going to suggest then that we continue to a time and date certain if the board is of a, of a mind to do that. And while the board is, and while the board is thinking about that, Charlie or, or Mr. Waters, did, is there anything that, that you need to talk to us about before, before we do this motion for continuance?
Charlie?
Well, I, I think it's, you know, in my mind, it's kind of a process, whittle down is, in address as much as we possibly can. Take care of, I, I know a lot of things I can take care of, but there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be discussion oriented, such as entertainment, the use of the site, the outdoor seating, things like that. So I, I guess I might, I'm kind of on the fence one way or the other. I can, I can knock down a lot of the comments, I can take care and address a lot of the things that we've talked about tonight to get the list of things that need to be reviewed a lot more compact than what they are now. I think maybe that would be a little bit more productive than to try and keep on addressing things here tonight.
Okay. Mr. Waters, are you in line with that?
I, I am, and I, I know that you asked if I had any questions, and I think that I will generate more as we prepare for the next hearing. So I, I won't consume the board now, because my questions now, I think, would probably be somewhat haphazard. So I appreciate what I've gotten from the board so far tonight, so have the board decide what they want to do.
Okay, all right, Chris Bashoff?
Yeah, could I just make one comment, Glenn, and I, and I guess it's like, it's information that I know some things that I'm going to want to know about when we get to some of these other items, and this really is for Rich, you as part of the board of selectmen, and Charlie and Rob as well as, you know, this site's been going on for a number of years now, even prior to me being on the planning board. And I, I've continually heard about this, some type of possible decision that came from the selectmen or some type of document that said something to the effect of all previous approved uses under a previous owner were authorized, and I keep hearing about this, but I've never actually seen any formal decision on it from the board of selectmen, and I think of all the topics that may be coming up in the future, I, I think this is going to be an important piece, so I'm just hoping somebody can bring this up or discuss it, or affirm or deny whether it exists, or it's happened, or these conversations have happened.
Uh, what happened is, and, and I maybe should review this before I speak, but there was a comment made under approval that said previous activities were allowed. What it didn't say is previous not approved activities were not allowed, so the last owner did some things that he never had approval for, and then Saddleup was saying, well, he did this, so we, we can do it too, but he did it without approval. So that, that's what the issue was, and, you know, he was talked to about it too, but.
So I guess I'd just kind of like to know whatever came of that, or whatever decisions came to, or legal opinions came from that, because I, I think that's going to be a big driving force behind some of these other topics that come up as we move further along.
Chris? The, the board, the, the board of selectmen and myself, and I think Glenn Koppelman and somebody else was there, I don't remember, it was Glenn Greenwood, did meet with the board, called in Peter Loughlin, and Peter Loughlin basically said, because this was the discussion, that just because somebody did something without approval, doesn't mean that it could be then continued, because the board said, yeah, you could continue what the restaurant said, but the attorney clarified through court cases and other things that that didn't mean you could continue illegal use. As a matter of fact, Phil then said, yeah, just because someone, and he did not mean this about Saddleup, so please do not take it that way. But just because someone was selling heroin out the back door, doesn't mean that you could continue doing it. And you just used that as an example, he was not using it as an example for Saddleup. He did not mean it for that, he was just giving a facetious example of someone doing illegal activity that couldn't then be continued. I do not know if the selectman took minutes of that meeting, it was held in the town hall, and it was with Attorney Loughlin.
But what is, Ellen, what is being done, just so I'm clear, what is being done now under the protection of past use that is illegal? Just so I can, I, I want to make sure I don't miss the point of this.
That wasn't, that wasn't, that, that's not a question I'm going to answer, that was a question the board of selectmen brought up, and it was they asked the question because they wanted clarification of that one statement that was on the plan as to whether that meant any use that was ever used at the site, or just uses that had been approved. What is and is not going on illegally to the site was not a question asked to me, nor is it a question I'm going to ask, answer at this point, that would be the selectmen.
Oh, I was, I was only addressing you merely because you were the one that was, was giving the narrative, so I apologize if I addressed the wrong.
I'm giving the narrative as to what the, I'm, I'm giving the narrative as to what the attorney told the board of selectmen when asked that question.
And, and just because it wasn't approved before, doesn't mean you can't get it approved now, the point is, it hasn't been approved. And I mean, an example to me is outdoor dining. The previous owner did not have outdoor dining. He did have some outdoor dining, but it was not approved. And that's the kind of thing that you need to do in your site plan, is we're going to put X number of tables outside, and this is what we're looking for.
But I think, don't, don't we have approval for some outside seating on the north side?
Not that I know of.
I don't believe so.
Just for a point of, of argument here, there was never an approved site plan prior to the, the site plan we submitted back in 2014, 2015. There's never a site plan on record, so I don't know what, how I can really define what was approved, because there is no site plan that exists. There's septic designs, but that's about it.
That would have been, that was actually where I was going with that, that was my point, so, but I guess if we're not, it's, it's making it sound like, or the way I heard it was that we are currently doing things that, under the disguise of past protection, that's illegal, and I just, I, I, I don't know of anything, but I think that the, the question was brought up, basically, but that, what allows prior uses is the note in the site plan. And I think that it's probably obvious that illegal prior uses wouldn't be permitted, like, again, if, if someone was selling heroin at the, at the back door, then obviously, that's a prior use, and it would not be ratified going forward, so I, I just think that that, it kind of states the obvious. So prior permitted uses is, is what would apply here, I think that's what the, the site plan says. And that's what we're operating under, prior permitted uses are, are allowed.
And, and we need to say allowed and not allowed use is not illegal.
Well, permitted is really the only way you could say it, because like I said, there was no, there was no site plan, so you can't really know, so all you can say is permitted uses. Whatever was permitted, so, but anyways, I, I was, hopefully I answered that, or helped answer that point, so to answer the question, it, it's a note on the site plan that, that allows for, we'll use the words, previous permitted uses. And I haven't heard anything to the contrary, that, that, that does not stand. Correct.
But yeah, I just, I wanted to bring this up, because it's been kind of lingering, and it seemed like every time I would hear stuff about this, then hearings would get continued, so it kind of never came to fruition, but I, I've, I've heard that there's, there was kind of a back and forth, so I was just hoping that as we move forward, I just felt there was a, it was a point that was probably going to need to be discussed, and at, at some point.
Other comments from the board? All right. Charlie, looking, looking ahead to a future date. Would the public hearing in May, and I don't, I don't even know what our schedule looks like, Ellen could help me, but that would be essentially a month from now, is that? Say again?
I just said May 18th, and it's currently open, although we have a couple of plans being submitted.
So, Charlie, is that, is that a date you think you could work with, assuming that, that new materials would have to be submitted in advance of that?
I don't know if I'd be able to cover everything that we've talked about tonight, I could, like I said, I could make an attempt to at least narrow down the list, if it's, if it's worth it to the board for me to try and do that.
Well, I mean, I think, I, I think, I think we're at a point where we're fine, we're finally having a discussion here. Whoa, bad feedback. And I, I, I'd hate to, I'd hate to put a big gap of time, if, if we could make some significant headway in the next month, that, you know, get us further along, that would, I think that would be good.
All right, let me, let me do the best I can to get another set of plans back in there with some of the topics that we discussed tonight, and, and try and address a few more things. That we, you know, that, that aren't really planned issues, like contacting DOT, things like that, so I can at least come back and have answers to some of those other comments that we talked about tonight.
Okay, and I, I'm not trying to force you into doing it a month from now, because if, if you think that it's, you know, that you, it's really going to hamstring you, and you won't have a lot, then, then maybe we ought to consider an alternate date, but I'm just sort of have to rely on your judgment on that one.
Well, if, if we keep the date, and I run into an issue, or, or don't really feel that I have enough to accomplish getting another set of plans back, would the board be okay with me requesting a continuance on the May meeting?
Sure.
Okay, why don't we keep the date?
I personally would really hate for you to ask for a continuance, I'd like to at least come in and go over what we can. And even if it's to catch up.
Having, I think we're making progress.
Yeah, and I don't like seeing the gap.
Address, but I feel like we're making progress.
When we have the, the gaps, the public thinks you're delaying. And I don't think you're delaying, but we don't want to get that misconception, I think that we need to talk about what we can. I would like to talk about outdoor seating and noise next time, for sure.
And, and I think the sooner that we talk about those things, the sooner that the restaurant can begin operations legally for the summer. I mean, they're looking at the summer season, they're looking at outdoors, we're still looking at COVID being there, so we're looking at outdoor seating and that sort of thing, so I think it's important that we have the discussions sooner rather than later on those two issues, so that parameters are in place prior to the summer season beginning.
All right. So. Are we ready for a motion to continue to May 18 with new materials due by which date, Ellen?
Can I make a suggestion? If, if some of the board is not too keen, if, if we have to get an extension, then maybe we should just maybe push that date out a couple of weeks if an extension, because I know how busy Charlie gets, and I, I would just hate to think, I mean, to, to have a meeting, to talk about a little bit, and then have a meeting, talk about a little bit more. I just kind of want to make sure that, you know, the next time we sit down, we could probably, we can get a conditional approval.
Well.
Charlie seemed a little hesitant, whether, he didn't seem overly confident on the 18th, so I just, I feel like I, I don't want to not be as prepared as we should be in order to keep the 18th, because again, I, we heard from a few board members that would not be too receptive to an extension if we needed it at, on the 18th.
Well, I, I, I think the board just wants to make sure that if we're going to meet, we're going to be productive, and we're going to make headway on this, so. I mean, one option we have is that, and again, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but if you, if you thought that an extra couple of weeks beyond that would be helpful, we could possibly do the first Tuesday in June.
I think that that's better, Charlie.
It would be June 1st.
June 1st?
It would be June 1st, except the Stormwater Center, Jamie Hool, he, he will come and do the stormwater management thing on June 1st.
I mean, I can move him. That's the only thing I know we have on that evening.
I, I think it would be important probably to get this taken care of.
I agree.
And we can, we can move the stormwater presentation to, to another date, Glenn?
That's absolutely fine.
So how does the board feel then about instead of May 18, June 1? Gives Charlie an additional couple of weeks with, with new materials due by, if, by when, Ellen, if we do it for June, June 1? What, Glenn?
I was gonna say, wouldn't it be the 20th at? I was gonna say, wouldn't it be the twentieth at noon time?
Is that a Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
Yep.
Motion to continue to six forty-five, June first.
With?
With plans due on May twentieth.
May twentieth.
No, no later than May twentieth noon.
I'll I'll second that.
All right, motion by Richard, second by Peter Coffin. Further discussion from the board. All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
And Ellen?
Yes.
And Glenn Copelman is yes, so that's unanimous. Oh, boy, okay.
Could I get copies of tonight's letters um emailed over to me at some point?
Uh Ellen or Glenn, can you guys do that for Charlie?
Yeah, mine, mine literally, you already have Charlie.
Okay.
Uh do you have Dennis's already, Charlie?
I do. So I just didn't have the uh department comments.
Oh, oh. Well, the same question then, Ellen or Glenn, can you guys get those?
I'll get, yes, I'll get them to him.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
And can Ellen, can you resend that selectman's letter? Because I don't seem to have a copy of that.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and uh for the benefit Mister of Mr. Lead, uh the the next hearing for this will be June first at six forty-five.
Got it.
Okay, great. All right, uh Charlie and Mr. Waters, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Bye, guys.
We'll see you, we'll see you in a month, or a month and a couple of weeks.
A public service announcement, the big boom. Was for Mayo Pitt. Somebody gave permission for a gender party to announce the birth of a baby. And the state.
So what was it?
The state police is involved and Channel Nine is there and quite a subdue.
So you guys didn't offer them a permit, huh?
You didn't. I guess manager decided they could do this on his own.
Oh, my God, okay.
I I missed that. What was it?
Gender reveal.
Gender reveal.
Gender reveal explosion.
Wow. People are so self-absorbed.
Baby boy.
All right, okay, so.
Just one.
So for the record and the minutes, we concluded that hearing at nine forty-five. Uh I know you guys probably want a break, but I think we really just need to, we've only got a few things here to to get through, and hopefully they won't take too too long. Ellen, I I've got this release of funds that you sent for Lori Thomas of R three dash seven lots one and two. It has no balance associated with it. I have no idea what it's about, but it's a release for remaining funds.
Oh, isn't that Russell Thomas's property?
Yes, it is.
Wow, so that's from.
Like two years ago.
Which property?
Like a lot line adjustment?
Yeah. Yeah, with his grandson or something?
And.
All right.
And I double checked and everything they needed to is complete. I reviewed the file.
Oh, okay, so what I need then is a motion uh from the board uh to authorize me to sign this on behalf of the planning board. Uh it also will need selectmen's signatures and town engineer's signature.
I'll move, yeah, I'll second that. It also needs the amount filled in.
Well, of course.
So.
It's the balance.
The balance, yeah.
When we do balance, we just write balance and.
Oh, I see, whatever's left in the account.
Yep.
All right, so what Lynn, did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, Lynn's and second by Peter Coffin, discussion. Okay, roll call. Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Uh Ellen?
Yes.
And Glenn Copelman, yes. All right, so I will, I will go ahead and sign that and say, Ellen, do you want me to send it to you or to Cindy?
Um you can send it to me and I'll forward it on to her.
Okay. Let's see, we have, let's. Something related to veterans condo docs for granite fields uh will be reviewed and discussed by the board under new business. This is a question about enforcement and enforcement concern that was previously sent out to the board.
There's two different items there. I think there's a semi column there.
The condo docs is is we have the condo docs and everybody got them. And some news reviewed them, but I think that there was some board members who had comments. So before we can let the building inspector know that is um previous plan is complete, it was based on getting condo docs that the board approved.
All right, did board members have questions or comments on that?
Yes, I I I do, um I shared them with uh Glenn and um Ellen after the last meeting, I was hoping that we'd get those to Summer for review, but.
I did, and he 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 addressed both of them, Peter. And he felt that the the condo documents address both the amendment and the requirement that the planning board have the end, the end ability to um approve any amendment offered by the the condo owners themselves.
Yeah, however, it doesn't state that in the.
It does, it's he he.
I can, I I've got a condo docs right up in front of me right now.
He pointed out, um it's it's toward the end of the document. I'll send you the email, Peter, but he he absolutely, he absolutely thinks that the condo documents are fine.
All right, I'm gonna, I'll I'll send you out the uh revisions. There's uh some mistakes in there. There's a reference to um a line seven C below, and it's in in seven, line seven, and it in fact uh refers to um uh it should be eight C, but um there is a line on the Amendment of Declaration, that entire line seven, or paragraph seven, um there's no, it it's talking about the, that's the Amendment of Declaration. That's where it should say that uh it says no such amendment shall be contrary to the provisions of the condominium act. It does, makes no reference anywhere in that paragraph or the ordinances, rules and regulations of the Town of Kingston. I think that should be added. Um also, I think it should be added that all amendments must be approved by the Kingston Planning Board and recorded at the Registry of deeds. I will. It, not in that paragraph. And uh um that's the paragraph that deals with Amendment of Declaration. So you can, you can look at again, unless it's gotten added since the one you sent out a month ago or sort of weeks ago.
Are you guys looking at the same docs?
Yeah, I I if you, if you've got the document, you can give me the paragraph. I got the entire document in front of me and uh there's a that's the the big paragraph, that the amended paragraph four. Uh and that's the one I said it has somewhat clumsy wording, but um let me take, find it for you. The paragraph two M says, rules mean those rules and regulations adopted from time to time by board of directors relative to the use of the condominium provided, provided they're not in conflict with the condominium act. Or the director, the direct, sorry, the declaration or the bylaws. And I think that should also have, or the ordinances, rules and regulations of the Town of Kingston, since they've already included the other three items. Uh in the definition, it does not say that. Um in paragraph find paragraph four here. Um paragraph four was the one that was amended. And it's here it is, um. Yeah, it does talk about fifty-five years of age or older. That's the only place that's been amended. But um.
You see section thirteen on the last page, Peter.
Okay, let me come down to section thirteen on the last page. This is uh resale of units, no article, that's, yeah, that's resale of units. Okay, what number under thirteen?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing under number thirteen.
Okay. Article thirteen? Which article are you on?
Any changes or amendments? I'm sorry?
Which number under article thirteen are you on? There's only one through seven. Under article thirteen, which is resale of units.
He's on page, he he's on page eleven of the first section, Peter.
Okay, there's no page numbers on this one you sent out to us, so it's gotta be done by article number or uh paragraph number.
I have seven, eight, if you go, because seven, in mine, seven is Amendment of Declaration.
Okay, so that's the one I just talked about.
Right, if you keep going with numbering, then you have eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen says prior approval of the Town of Kingston Planning Board, any changes or amendments to this declaration or bylaws require the prior approval of the Town of Kingston Planning Board.
Okay, got it. So that doesn't have to be put in. I do think, however, under the paragraph seven, I, at the very least, with the paragraph that deals with amending the declarations, where it says it must comply with the um condominium act, it should also say the ordinances, rules and regulations of the Town of Kingston. That's um now I I think that our our paragraph thirteen is good. And I'm I'm fine. I think that would cover it as long as a future planning board uh is careful to um to make sure that any modified rules agree with the town regulations. But that I think it certainly should be on the par, there was one paragraph that deals with amending the rules, and it doesn't include a compliance with town regulations. I think it should. That's my opinion.
I will say that the board probably does want to be cautious about this, because at your next meeting, you're gonna be talking about whether or not you want me to send a letter to a condo association that just changed the rules of their bylaws without contacting the planning board at all, and they've already registered it at the registry. So Peter's point is not without merit, because you it came in too late for you to talk about it tonight.
But that, but the condo documents, the existing one explicitly says any amendments have to be approved by the Town of Kingston Planning Board.
That's, that's true, if in, but if they're reading on how to perform an amendment, all they need is that seventy-five percent. They 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 read that paragraph and they don't go down to the bottom uh part, the uh, you know, again, uh that would more likely, if if a group within the condo association wanted to amend the rules, they would look at that paragraph to see how to do it. It would be more likely than that they would see that they need, what they need to do in terms of um contacting the town. Um the uh it it would, I think it would be simpler to add that. The other thing I thought would, which should be up for discussion is whether um as we did with um one on Marshall Road, um Kings Landing, uh if we wanted to have annual verifications. Kings Road is a great example of a good condo association, which hopefully this would be too. Um they comply with all the rules and regs that that were put in, and they give us annual verification that nobody under fifty-five is living there. Um I don't believe that was included in the original condo docs for um solar, not solar. Um for the rest of that condominium down at Diamond. I mean, that's whatever.
Random, random fields.
Granite Fields, thank you. I can get an old, um and I don't know if we get annual verification from Granite Fields. Yeah, it. So um that does make enforcement a little bit harder for hopefully our new code enforcement officer, but um I I I think that would be a good clause to have in there, an annual verification from the condominium association. I know, we we did require it with with uh um Kings Landing, so the same.
That was a requirement that we placed on it?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, Ellen was key in getting that in there.
Well, for consistency's sake and for the, for the sake of, you know, keeping track of things, it's probably the right thing to do here, too.
In my experiences, most towns require that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember, um I think you may have even written it, no, that Lynn.
All right, so it sounds like we've got a couple of additional modifications for these then. Yes?
I, do you want me to uh make a motion?
Yes.
All right. I'll move with the uh, hang on a second, I gotta read that paragraph. Do you want me to get the typo too, or is that uh?
Should, you should put every, everything in there, Peter.
Okay, so uh I propose that the um Declaration of Condominiums, paragraph seven, Amendment of Declaration, subparagraph four, which says, says no such amendment shall be contrary to the provisions of the condominium act uh should have, insert comma, or the ordinances, rules and regulations of the Town of Kingston. Period. Uh and paragraph seven C here and below should read eight C here and below. And let me amend the other part, and uh and I'm not sure exactly where this would go. I would leave it to the attorneys on this one, but the uh um the direct Declaration of Condominiums include um annual verification to the Town of Kingston. And Lynn, do you know how that, or L Ellen, maybe, do you not remember how that was worded for Kings Landing?
No, but I had it at the office. I don't have it here.
Right.
They actually sent it to us yearly. So what are you verifying? The age and? Status?
Uh in this case, that's a good point. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're, if you're verifying, verifying the age, uh that no occupant is over the age of fifty-five, is is under eighty to fifty-five, and uh that at least one occupant is a veteran. Of the so I I would, I would amend it to include that.
They have to have an annual verification to the Town of Kingston. Oh, so you want it to be that the occupants are age fifty-five or over?
That, you know, all.
And one. Is it, it's one owner, isn't it?
Uh, no, it's it's one occupant, I I believe, because they can, somebody can own it.
Correct.
Lease it, rent it.
And one occupant is a veteran.
Is a veteran of the Armed Forces of US, yeah.
Of the US Armed Forces.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the motion, Peter?
That's the motion, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellen Fal. Okay, motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellen Faulkner. Discussion? Alright. Get ready, roll call, Richard.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Peter Bakie.
Yes.
Peter Coffin.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Glenn is yes, so that's unanimous, motion carries. Alright. Uh, the next item on the list is something that you brought up, Ellen, and this is, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but this is regarding the, an applicant who wanted to bring their own plan to the registry?
Yeah, I, I told the gentleman that I couldn't do it unless I spoke with the planning board, because usually we have, normally I would do it, but with COVID and everything, we've allowed the engineers to actually bring it to the registry due to some of the registry restrictions and things of that nature. But the applicant, um, the one from Concanon Road, Mr. Anthony, uh, didn't want to pay his engineer to do it, he just wanted to do it. And I said, "Well, we don't usually allow that, I'll have to check with the board," and again, as I noted, one of the reasons we don't usually let them do it, because his next question was, "Where is the registry and what do I have to do once I get there?" Um, but I promised the man that I would ask the board if they wanted to allow me to have applicants start bringing their plans to the registry to be registered.
Yeah, I, I think from, um, I, I realize it's better to have someone who's a professional do this, uh, and who's done it before, but I think from the board's standpoint, the app, uh, the engineer is representing the applicant. So I can't think that we could let the engineer for an applicant do it, and not let the applicant do it, um.
I, I can tell you a reason why.
Yeah.
Because the applicant could change something, and the engineer's risking his license and everything else if he changes anything.
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, in, in theory, the engineer could change something at the.
He could, but he's risking a lot more than, yeah, that's.
Yes.
The reason why we typically didn't allow applicants, engineers to bring it over is because there was the trust issue that the engineer wouldn't change something.
Right. Yeah.
And there's even, there's.
That's a good point.
But I don't understand why someone who is, who, who would be allowed to have a paid person, um, register their plan, can't register their plan themselves.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if they have questions about where the registry is, but the answer is very easy.
And the registry can assist them with the process, um. I, I, I guess the, the, the answer is, is that if we were registering them because we wanted to make sure that the correct and final plan is the one that got registered, um, then we should be doing all of them, um.
Well, and we did pre-code.
I understand that, yeah.
Correct.
Alright, so what, what, what direction are we, is the board gonna give to Ellen with regard to this subject? Are you comfortable letting an applicant do it if they wish?
I, I am, I think we're opening up a big legal issue if we don't.
Ri- right, I think we can verify, you know, the old trust but verify, we can always check, um, at the registry deed, just to make sure that the plan, because, because you can do that on the computer and just take a look at the plan that got registered. If, it, it does make more work for us, but, um, or for Ellen, um, but if the plan gets registered and it's the same one with the same stamps, uh, that, that we have in the office, then all's good, if it's not, then we have a case to bring against the applicant, you know, if there's some kind of uh, something funny went on there, um, I, I think that's so, such a rare event that we, we could address it when it occurred, I just don't, I just agree with Chris, I don't see how we can tell an applicant that his employee can, it, which is basically what it is, is contracting, contracted employee can, uh, perform a function, uh, but he can't, or he or she can't.
I'll bring up one other issue, is we've had people that have taken stuff to the, uh, registry and had it recorded that the planning board had nothing to do with.
Yep.
But what about a situation where an applicant's representing themselves and they're not represented by an engineer?
Hmm, we don't have those plans recorded.
I, I think it should be the planning board records them, and Bella doesn't feel okay taking them up there, I'll take them up there. I'm gonna just, uh.
Yeah, I think that's the best solution, I mean.
Are you guys comfortable with the thought of the applicant doing it? All I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have the applicant sign a date of form that he picked up the Mylar and removed it from the office on this date, and the deal is with the building inspectors anyway, then until I get a reported plan number, they're not gonna give him any permits anyway. So if you're comfortable with them doing it, here's a way to make sure that they do it properly and you get the information. My concern was that someone would take the plan and never get it recorded.
I, I guess my, my concern is that if we don't, if we don't do them all, and we're only granting special exemptions to certain people, that's where we run into a problem.
Yeah.
That, that, that is where we run into a problem, either we do them all.
That's what I'm saying.
Or.
Yes, Ellen's saying that, that we would, it would be the blanket approval for her to give the applicant the Mylar, and, uh, the back check.
Yeah, for who, whoever, whoever wants to record it can, they're just gonna sign a document that said they removed the Mylar from the building to get it recorded. So that way, when they call me back and say, "I lost it," I'll have a piece of paperwork that said they took it. So if the board's fine with that policy, then I think if, we don't have to worry about who we're offending, we're treating differently, the applicant can tell us who's gonna read the plan, and we'll just have them sign a document that they picked it up for recording. And that way, the town's covered, they can go get it recorded, they have to tell me what the recorded plan number is. I then contact the registry to get the copies anyway, they don't do that. And so we'll have a process in place, and it's probably only gonna be for a couple more months anyway.
So is this a, this is a temporary.
Both that.
This is a temporary.
Yes.
Registry is kinda doing.
I think I would be, I would feel more comfortable if Rich is willing to bring it over as an official representative of the town.
Absolutely.
I, I, I would, I would much rather an official rep, I think this is just opening a can of worms we don't want to get into, and I understand it's temporary, but I, I think when, if you, well, I think you're gonna have people push back that, or, oh, if I can save a couple bucks here, I think it's a, I think it's a can of worms we don't want to open, and, and if Rich is willing to act in the official capacity of a member of the board and as a selectman to run it over, I, I think that's our best course of action.
And I think it also lets the registry know that anybody from Kingston can't just show up and register something, I mean.
Yeah.
That it came from the planning board.
So how did, for example, with, um, Ellen's case of the, uh, set of revised condo docs got registered? Um, how did that happen? Because registry is not supposed to take it from anybody. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I, I would agree, uh, keep, keep it, if, if Rich is willing to do it, we keep doing it this way, because, as you say, if it's temporary, putting those can, worms back in the can, when, you know, in three months from now, when we decide that, um, it's safe to do this ourselves, um, it's gonna be hard, while, you know, Joe Schmo, it was able to register his, you know, last month, how come I can't? And, uh, I, I think if Richard's willing to do this, we should go with that.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If the issue is we want to have someone from the town do it, there are two people on the list right now for the registry that are acceptable town residents for doing this, and it's Ellen and me. And if we want to make it rich, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to send to the, our, the, the registry that there's another person. I'll just take them on, and by day I'm in. I mean, that's, that's fine, that's, I.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that, and I think that's good. Because.
I didn't choose to say that twenty minutes ago.
I really thought the issue was one of, of not wanting or not needing to do it, um, because the engineers could do it, and my only problem with saying the engineers can do it, saying the actual person paying for the engineer to do it can't do it, just seemed like that was wrong.
Yeah.
And that was so crazy, but the board had to tell me that.
Yeah.
And, and there, and there's potential constitutional issues going on over at the courthouse. Some people are indicating they're being denied access for if they don't want to get a vaccine, or they don't believe in masks and stuff like that, so then you have somebody that's wants to be able to go record it themselves, and then they're gonna say they're legally being prohibited from doing it because of their beliefs. It's, there's a lot of other stuff at play that could fall to that, so yes, Glenn, if you're willing to do it, or Ellen?
I'm, I'm willing to do it, and then we don't have to ask them to verify another person.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We don't have a vote on this, right?
Oh, no.
No.
No, at that point, no.
No.
So how many plans have been recorded by somebody other than Glenn or Ellen?
Any of them since COVID started.
Right, there's probably been half a dozen.
I wish I'd known that a long time ago, because I would never would have, have thought that that was the way to do it.
That, I, I, that's why I think it's, it's just important, now that it's being brought to our attention, I, I think as long as we take a position on it immediately, that it's brought to our attention. I think the safest thing to do, protect us and the town, is to say, "Hey, these are the people authorized to do it."
Yeah.
Okay, then, then, then we probably ought to do it by motion.
So moved. Yep. With the.
Second.
Second by Lynn.
Glenn or Ellen can still.
You, you guys don't have to make a motion, that's the current procedure, we're just gonna follow it.
That's why I say.
That's what we already have in place.
We're just, we're just affirming.
We, we already have that.
Yeah, we're just revoking the, the temporary measures of having the, um, architects.
We're affirming that we're gonna follow from this point forward our standard procedure, which is either in, I, I, an authorized town representative will be recording plans at the registry.
And, and we do not, we do not authorize an exemption due to the COVID, uh, pandemic.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, uh, roll call, Richard.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Peter Bakie.
Yes.
Peter Coffin.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Ellen?
Uh, yes.
And Glenn is yes, so that's unanimous, motion carries. Okay. Alright, uh, back to the list. We did the veterans condos, we did the, earlier on, we did the enforcement issue on Frontage Road, which the selectmen are working on. We did the bond release, uh, minutes, minutes of January twenty-seven and March sixteen, so we'll take them one at a time. January twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one minutes.
If nobody has any, uh, amendments to make, I thought they were fine, I'll move that we accept the minutes of January twenty-seventh as written.
Okay, motion by Peter Coffin.
Second.
Second by Chris Pashaw, discussion? Any corrections or additions? Amendments? Alright, there being none, roll call, Richard.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Peter Bakie.
Yes.
Peter Coffin.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Ellen. Ellen?
Didn't move. There we go.
Yeah.
And Glenn is yes, so that's unanimous. Motion carries, uh, minutes of March sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. Any corrections or adjustments?
No. I make a motion, we accept the minutes of March sixteenth as written.
I'll, I'll second that one.
By Lynn, second by Peter Coffin, discussion. Alright, roll call, Richard.
Yes.
Ah, you jumping the gun there. Chris.
Yes.
Peter Bakie.
Yes.
Peter Coffin.
Yes.
Lynn Merrill.
Yes.
Ellen Faulkner. Hello, Ellen? Ellen?
Yes.
Gender reveal must have messed up here in that connection.
Oh, that could be. Did you vote yes, Ellen?
She said yes.
Okay, and, and, and Glenn is a yes, so that's unanimous as well, motion carries. Uh, somehow or other, we carried the driveway issue onto this agenda as well, are, are we still talking about that?
Rich.
No, that was.
It's gonna set up enough time to come in and talk to you about all the reasons that it should be in the planning board's hands.
Who's doing that?
Rich saying a letter.
Okay, alright.
So he's obviously not here tonight.
Right.
No, that was a mistake.
Yeah, okay, I thought we were done with it for now, but that's okay.
We, uh.
Okay, that, that is the extent of the items that I have on my list, is there anything else, that, is there anything I missed, or anything else that folks want to discuss? Going once? Twice? Alright, then I am going to call us adjourned at ten twenty PM. Thank you all, and we'll see you in a.